How's it going?
It's good. I wanted to be, uh...
You was trading into the captain's spot?
Well, I, uh...
Are you new chief?
No, new chief's there.
Okay.
I retired about twelve years ago as assistant fire chief.
Okay.
And then Chief Miller came back and he deputy fire marshal.
Okay.
So I was asked if I could back and help with fire convention. So I'm getting in the ground in the position. Going back to what I used to do. So... I'll be open, I'll be nice.
Tom's number four, Rita?
Here.
Tom's number three, Ma?
Here.
Mayor post ten, my troops?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Here.
All are present.
Great. Want to thank you for your attendance today. We're sorry because this public comment, she turned it on. It did not affect the agenda. And we agree I may have to do it. Everybody want to?
Good morning. Nancy Teague here, resident of Carmel by the sea. I'm not long with some of you, but long enough to feel rooted and connected to the community. I wanted to start off by thanking all of the city staff, all of the elected officials, all of the police, fire, et cetera that go throughout our city doing great work. And I would like to encourage throughout this day's meeting, a very pleasant and cordial interaction. We can shoot and disagree, but we can do that in a very civil manner and move ahead to make decisions that helps our city be the one and only place that we love to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's following with the Sunset Cultural Center. Sunset Cultural Center continues to be extremely concerned with the inclusion of the north and south parking lots as housing sites and the housing element plan. Ample convenience and free parking are critical to FCC's ability to fulfill its mission as outlined in our operating agreement with the city of Carmel by the sea. Sunset Center is a place for entertainment, community, meaningful cultural activities and conferences for significant economic and cultural stimulus. Also, that would be appreciated, the open communication and encourage this community. Thank you.
I see no one close to public comment period, just maybe on Zoom.
Oh, we have one here.
I'm sorry, go on to the... Oh, I'm sorry.
People are very different, everybody else. Been dealing with two recruiting building projects in the last month. Another one's coming up soon. And I'm telling you that if you need a building here, you will need to decide which side you want them to enter. And hopefully, it will be just in the north lot. I think that this street project, they could accommodate a two-day project. Thank you. I hope you'll think about that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The last call, the mayor's question speak. They don't see anybody. Call the public comment period, anybody with staff.
Uh, we have one person on Zoom that just came on.
All right, Zoom.
Michael McWalter, so like...
Michael, four zero.
You need to unmute yourself? Michael, can you unmute yourself?
Michael. Michael, last stand. All right, we'll move on then. All right, Kevin, close your...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and guests, residents and visitors, business owners and property owners. We're grateful to interview you. This is actually, I think, the most number of people we've had, so we're very grateful. The last time we talked about strategic priorities was in August of last year. I have a couple of housekeeping matters, first of all. We tried to set up the room differently. We got some comments. We hate to have our backs to the public, so you'll forgive us. But this was the only format that had a whole long alley like there. So this is the format that we have to set up, so our apologies. I'll be using the term "we" today. When I talk about "we," I'll talk collectively about the staff and the council and the community. I think that we are, you know, kind of a team, certainly a family in a lot of ways. And when I use "you," maybe I'll be talking about just you, council. So I'll try not to be equal about it, but again, I'll be talking collectively. The department heads and executive team are around the table. There's been a little bit of critique, I would say, about the number of priorities, top priorities, high priorities that we have. I'll talk about that a little bit more as we get into this. But I really have not really encouraged, but admonished them to get involved in the conversation, talk about what's feasible and what we can add and what we can't do. Thanks to Bob Brary, it is warm in this room. You can tell because councilor grandma doesn't have an antarack on her hat today. So we do have a new heater, so thank you, Bob, for the heater. If it gets too warm, we can turn it down. The mayor has some, has the issue, so if he gets up and moves around every thirty minutes, he's not supposed to sit for long thirty minutes, so please bear with us. We can take breaks. We have, I guess we've got four hours to do this or so.
Bunch of that.
Bunch of that, twelve thirty. Thank you, and everyone's welcome. We have enough food for everyone. There's coffee and some snacks over there. I think we know everyone that's at the table with the exception, you may not know Chief Miller, Matt from Sabbatical, like Chief Demossi. I'm welcome, Chief Miller, who's been with us for several years. And the guy at his right, I call him Chief Brown, he's actually our fire marshal, also in turn of the dead. Three of them, all three of them run Sabbatical, and we brought them back out of retirement. So welcome, Chief Miller.
Thank you.
Fire Marshal Brown, and everyone else, Chief Demossi. He's missed the last couple of days, as you said, to get back. So again, we're going to walk through the format, a little like we did. My wife is actually taking, I'm housekeeping mayor, I appreciate the service. She's taking a class on data analytics. And there could be basically nothing more boring in my mind. And she said, you know, a few, a month ago, and councilor grandma officer heard this before, she said, "Read this passage about data analytics." And the only thing that jumped out at me was this Latin phrase. And you may remember the class, you can probably read this. But it translates roughly to something like, you know, it's a Latin medium and there's a Russian translation. But it basically comes down to, if you try to catch two rabbits, you'll catch none, none. And I think that that is part of the theme that we wanted to impart with you today. I wanted to impart with you today. We have twenty-nine priority projects that the council's working on. And they're all good ones. There's no dumb projects on the list. It's just that we don't have the capacity. And the public does not have the capacity. Wait till Mr. Burley gets your phone turned on.
Sorry.
We don't have the capacity, and the public doesn't have the capacity to absorb everything that we're working on and then give constructive feedback. So again, this will be a theme. And we do have a proposal for you at the end of the presentation when we talk about the twenty-nine, which is to really maybe cook down the highest priority that we're going to work on for the next six months to about six to eight. So again, that's our proposal, whether that flies with, again, you, council, or you, the public, remains to be seen, but that's going to be our intent. So again, the theme trying to teach us to focus today. Over half the top priorities are, of the priorities are top priorities. And again, we made some progress on some and not as many on others. So I think with that, mayor, council, I'll get off the rack and move into... Oh, that was the other thing. So you'll see more documents in the packet than you've seen in the past. In the past, there's been one table that has all the priorities with some information, progress, percentages, and those kinds of things. But what we heard from, again, members of the council and the community, they wanted to see, you know, how were they broken down by some of the top headings, conservation of the natural environment, or fiscal responsibility. And so you see a table about that. There was a question about how many priorities are dedicated to each other, different departments. So you'll see a different table about that. So it's the same information, kind of just in some areas, in some attachments, it's more expanded than others. So again, it's confusing. That was not our intent, but we get a little bit more logic. So this is an example of the priorities by department. It's meant nothing more than to show you who kind of has what and what. And when you think about what each department has, when you think about capacity. Because these priorities are in addition to daily workload. In the planning office, for example, the planning office deals with current planning applications. So remodels and new projects and use permits and all kinds of things in addition to this list of priorities. I did, I am a miss in one regard. I apologize, council. This is an opportunity to celebrate our newest assistant city administrator, Brandon Swanson, have accepted by offer to take on the A.C. Much pinch sugary, he has no idea what he's getting into. But he has to do his job for about two months. So his official start date is actually Monday at first, but he'll do the job. Thank you, Brandon, for everything you've been doing.
Chip, Chip, Chip.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just back up one second. You said something about...
You listen to Latin again, council member?
You stated something that may have gone by, and I want to be clear on it. You want us to prioritize things that are going to happen or want to happen in the next six to eight months, which may mean that something that is high but can wait goes down. I don't understand.
Yeah, and we, that was a proposal. We just actually, you know, again, part of the critique of the priorities that we currently have is that we just have too much on our plate. So we're making small progress on a lot of all the priorities, quite frankly. There's a couple that you'll see that we haven't made any progress on. But we're making more iterative progress where, again, our supposition from a staff perspective, my supposition is that if we focus on a fewer number, highest priorities if you will, then we can get those done in the next six months. We'll come back in September and we can have to it. So again, it's a theme that we're not just from council, but certainly from my colleagues and from the public as well. So it's an idea, council member, and again, we can delve more into it. One of the other ideas we came up with, come up with like a four priority ranking system. Then it gets a little bit more complicated. So again, I think that after we get through all the slides, we can talk about whether you want to go with those, like, you know, that kind of route, and then what it would look like. So it isn't just an idea, just a thought position.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a slide?
Yes, sir.
So there are thirty-four items on that list. If I add up those numbers to the top, eighteen, four, twenty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. So there are only twenty-nine items on the list. I don't do math. So it's data analytics.
It's probably, I failed that class, obviously. Evan, you want to tell us why, what did, what did Carrie over there?
There's some overlap on these lists because some projects, like the police building, it's three different departments. So the numbers at the top don't add up to twenty-nine.
Okay, so like, everything on this list is going to be covered today?
Yes, sir. I think that's, you know, it's a great, it's a great question because again, you have priorities that touch on departments. So it can absorb some level of capacity from other departments. That's not a critique, it's just reality.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we'll jump to number one. I do have, I do have some notes. Someone can flip back and forth a little bit, council. So telecommunications, this has been a, you know, a, you know, kind of a issue that we've been dealing with for some time. We talked about consistency with federal law. This is a, we have a draft adopted by the city council. It was sent to the coastal commission, so it's not law yet. And Brandon, do you remember, tell me, remind me when that was sent to the coastal commission?
Yeah, sorry, Jeff, I don't, I don't, I don't know. We were just, we, as everybody knows, it takes like, when we went back to our signature ordinance, we submitted and it took five or six months to get on there yet. So it'll take some time once you submit your application for the coastal commission to get you on there yet.
Yeah, and the coastal commission right now is dealing with, they're also dealing with rezoning in communities in Calipan because of the housing updates that a lot of the four hundred sixty cities, four eighty-six cities and thirty-one fifty-eight counties are going through right now. So again, they're, they're, for everyone's benefit, the mayor sat in the coastal commission for many, many years and it was kind of the pace of projects going into coastal commission. So my suggestion, mayor, is that maybe we can, I don't know, four or five of these and then accept a comment on that four or five? Or would you rather take public comment on all of them, like, each individual? Is that...
Let's see where we got to, Rick, that's one one, I think. I'd rather go with that one, actually.
Okay, okay. So yeah, I don't have anything else to add on the telecommunications. Are you continuing on your resume?
So on this one, is the only thing that's left is that fourth floor?
Yes, sir.
And then what's the, what's the dependency on that? And what's the staff, is there a staff involvement? Is this going to, you know, kind of where, you know, what's the burden on the staff to be this complete? Is it just waiting? Or is there, you know, essential resource to get to?
So the, right now, in the waiting period, there's nothing for staff to do. When we do get our hearing date, we will, we will need to review the coastal commission's staff report. We'll likely attend the meeting. It also depends on, you know, this will essentially be the last chance for telecommunications providers to challenge our ordinance. And so it also depends a little bit on, and I'm so sorry to interrupt everybody. It also, this also depends on what we see from the potential telecommunications providers, if we need to elicit a larger response to that. But once the coastal commission adopts it, the ordinance is effective immediately. If you remember what we did, we took what I think is a rather clever approach. All those supporting documents, the application materials, the requirements, the design standards, those were all adopted by the planning commission and confirmed by the city council. Those did not have to go to the coastal commission because they're not codified in chapter seventeen. They're mentioned in the ordinance, but they became effective immediately. So all those protections for the types of materials we need as part of the submission are effective already. And it's only the ordinance language itself that is waiting for the coastal commission to adopt it.
I've got a question with my mic on.
Yes, sir.
You just mentioned something that the providers could potentially challenge them at the coastal commission. So if there is a carrier that wants to apply, who needs that power? Do you think that they would wait until after it's been approved by the coastal commission?
You know, I don't know on that one. I mean, it would be up to each carrier if they felt that our current ordinance or the pending ordinance, which one was more beneficial to them. As of right now, we don't have any that fall in like, you know, one down Carmelo. We don't have anything like that pending right now.
And do you have any faceless on the, on the status? Okay, what do you mean?
Litigation?
Yeah.
I don't have anything on that. Okay.
The next item is, you know, we have this pesky, a lot of pesky laws that impact us. One's called Clean Water Act. And under the Clean Water Act, we are required to adopt local stormwater ordinance. And so again, this is another issue that has been approved by the planning commission, passed to the coastal commission for review and approval. The coastal commission is, you know, part of their, part of their charge is protecting the coast and providing access, so they're really hypersensitive about this, about this ordinance. We went back and forth with coastal commission staff, numerous drafts before it was approved. But it's, 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 you know, largely done. The one, the one item that you will see, and, you know, again, if you are into data analytics, I hope you'll forgive us, but, you know, sometimes you'll see a percentage that's gone backwards from August. And that really, what that actually means is probably we were overly enthusiastic in August. So we weren't quite a hundred percent last year. So again, when you see those, it was, you know, it's, we think, we thought we were a hundred percent. We thought we were across the finish line. And then actually, you know, we hit a, we hit a speed bump or something, we just like that. So anyway, mayor, that's sort of one of the...
Um, I have a question. So if I'm reading this right, it still needs to go to the planning commission for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Going back to the public, is there anybody in the public wishing to see that on Zoom?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
If you bring back the town, find them on Zoom.
Chip, if I keep the officials, it's like, it's a council of public that would want that percentage complete, highest complete down, you're not allowed.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, they're organized in a format where the highest percentage moves to the top of the list. And when it gets to number twenty-nine, it'll be below percent.
Thank you.
Car Week impacts now, you know, this one was added last, last, last year after we had another pretty rough car with, with people coming into the village and not being disrespectful as we would expect them, quite frankly. And it's not because Chief Demossi was wrong for those two years. But what happened is, and Emily really pointed this out to me yesterday. We have those signature, we had the Tuesday, Thursday signature events, and they really absorb much of the village. And we didn't have as many people coming for the after hour car shows and the like. And even though we continue to put increased protections in place, we still are a focus of a car week. Individuals who come for the after hours, events, informal car shows, showing your car off, sometimes doing car tricks. So again, what Chief Demossi did years ago was he built a chicane. So coming through the village where you weren't on the major routes and it wasn't as fun, down in the big open intersections of San Carlo, San Antonio, for example, where the car tricks could happen. And really increasing our presence, working with our partner agencies, getting a workout that we were not going to put up with, the untoward behavior. Last year, we talked about a sound monitoring device for exhausts. A lot of things, again, protect the safety and the sanctity of the village. And, you know, so this was added, actually provided you an update in October. She provided you an update in March about the events that we have on the schedule for this coming car, car week. And so again, it's a priority item. I mean, it really is something that will be an ongoing effort every year, quite frankly, on our part. But I'm not convinced it needs to be on this list in front of you.
Other comments on this item? I agree, I don't think it needs to be on one. Believe it to be kind of an update, can we follow that? I can put a bigger thing on.
I agree with you.
I agree. We can use that again when we go back through them, but, you know, it's, again, cognizant, and then we'll go fine with that. The cognizant point is that this is a, an advanced activity that absorbs capacity from multiple departments on any of these. That our public safety corner, that is out for, for public's reasons, sure. Actually, it's out for a day. The event organizers, the displays, Brandon's office dealing with signage and use permits and those kinds of things as well. So again, it's not a, it's not an event where we all take the lead off. It's really all hands on deck for that week because it's the obvious type of thing. So, fair enough. Thank you, council. Yeah, I knew it was a, that was the fourth slide. All right, it needs some tech help. Sebastian, will you?
I didn't have a chance to look at you. He really, I'm going to man. I was retired, you know? Yeah. Equerium, I was at college. Where were you? I was the director of the public safety side at the college for eight years. Oh, really? Which college? Oh, really? Yes, I was at the suicide with the train disaster. Okay. Over some programs out there. And then I retired and then I hired a college act.
Next item comes under the, my number four is entitled...
Oh, that training center's a good deal.
It's under the umbrella of six cycle, state mandated, updated on housing. And council has been spending a lot of time with this. We've had a lot of public meetings, public doubt meetings, like, public education. Brandon was on the phone, so advocates agree with us last night, literally last night, talking about this. The public's benefit, we do have a ad hoc committee of council member group, the council member club, who have been working on this for a year and a half or so. And thank you. So we've been working closely with, I suppose. We've been working closely with housing community development. The mayor, I spent the holidays, fifth district supervisor, Adam. And architects from City Pacific Row and Monterey. None of them will be leaving the housing deadline, which is April fifteenth. We are currently on track to meet the deadline, which is about two weeks. Plus, we have scheduled the next, is we're going to receive an update on next week on the second, but no decision. I'm just going to go to the back of the board and we're out for seven days of the inquiry, which is latest. And it's to the housing element. And then we're scheduling a special meeting of the planning commission and city council for the eighth, Monday, the eighth of April. At four P.M. Thank you. Planning commission will be reviewing the document, making recommendations to the council. The council will be pleased to adopt the housing element act after. That concludes my comments on that one.
Nancy Teague, thank you all very much for all of the work that you put into this project. It's been a long, hard road. And not, everybody has been plugged into this that we would have liked. So that there has been, at this juncture, some surprises for folks who haven't been watching us along the process that you've been following. But we, but I personally am looking forward to getting this adopted so that we can aggressively, not aggressively, just methodically, go through the next steps that has a series of deliverables and timelines that will need to work in the, in the weeks and months to come. The, I think the important thing, I think, I'm going to put words in your mouth, Chip, is that this, the scope of this line item is, again, just to get us approved, not all of the other action items that are part of the follow-up tasks. So thank you very much for everybody and all of your work. And let's get this thing to have go so we can protect things like grant funding, our local control, overbuilding, those types of things are at stake if we don't get this approved. So I'm, I'm on the phone, so let's make it happen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Andy Carr. I have a lot of questions. I read very carefully the letter that was sent out with all the detail from the state and our responses. And I feel that the identified properties are misleading. I also have a question about the group EMC who think you spent, we spent a lot of money on this consultant. And the way I understand it, unless it can be shown to me, these properties don't fit the criteria to be identified on this housing document. We cannot identify properties that we don't own. We cannot identify properties that are not available. And my question, and I look at Sunset Center and Vista Locals that are parking lots in use in Carmel, those are not available, those are not surplus land. So my question is, why were those put on? Why did we spend money, a lot of money for this group to put them on? Why hasn't, why haven't the properties that are empty land in Carmel like Planet Mansion, Rio Park, Scout House? I've looked at it carefully, and from what my knowledge is, from what I've been provided, those are the surplus land. So I would like those questions addressed.
Is there anybody else who's... Is there anybody on Zoom? So thankfully, this is an issue, and we might keep this on the priority list, I would say, yes. You just be checking on the list, I just don't think we're going to be questioning Andy's case today. Andy's right now. You guys think the part of the forum would have to be?
There are people that might come so close to you.
So what I was saying was, I think this is something we can keep on the priority list, obviously. But I think we're going to get the questions that Andy posed that has to answer the forums, we're going to have it around workshop Sunday.
So the very same is that Brandon will answer those questions from Mrs. Carr, uh, when we talk about this either next Tuesday, the second, or, uh, during the presentation, or on the eighth. Can we relax the form a little bit, I know I'm a little, only one second, I don't know what to go. Good.
If we wait to the eighth, that's too late. That's when the submission.
Sorry, the second. Sorry.
Right, and the meeting is on the eighth. So I think these are questions that as a community, we're entitled to know the answers. This is a very big issue in our community right now. And we are not understanding because either we don't have the right information or, I don't know. So we want answers to those questions because, and there was a letter written to the state from Victoria Beach and Rich Pepe, which addressed that. And then you answered it, but it still wasn't addressed enough. I want to know if there's a reason why that issue is not being addressed.
All right, Andy, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony.
He said that.
Bring back the council, council.
I'd like to add something, uh, in regards to what Andy Carr just spoke about. Uh, when we had our last council meeting in March, council gave direction, we were concerned about one sentence in specific, uh, that referred to the surplus land act. And yes, um, it was rewritten, but I believe the intent, uh, needs to be addressed. And I can read the first sentence, this is from program 1.1, the city owned sites. And it says, the city plans to make three sites, number one, two, and three, it knows referred to the north and south blocks of Sunset Center and Vista Lobos, available over the next five years for potential development of 149 units over the three sites. So we're still keeping that in there. And I believe the direction that council gave, uh, was that these are not available sites because of the surplus land act. And, and the words that were used is if the city makes these surplus land, then they will be available. But these are not surplus land. These are actively in use and have a very important function to provide much needed parking. It's also concerns with Sunset Center and the fact that Sunset Center had released with the city until 2032. So I feel this needs to be addressed, especially since this is the seven day public comment period and if we wait till the second, it's too late.
Good night. Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. You know, a lot of people, including my, my grandmother grandma, have, um, made statements regarding councils. The councils attend, the councils whatever, regarding the applications from the city to the state. And I will say that they do not speak for me. And I was, I am very okay with that staff followed the direction that the council gave them at the last, at the last meeting.
I would give that.
But we believe the three of us.
With respect, with respect, um, I do not, you know, I'm making the same regarding me, not everybody else. So I would appreciate it if, you know, when people talk about what the council said, they take a step back and talk about what they think or what their view is, and not what the council is. Because I've not given people to speak, I've not given people the right to, um, interpret or my, my own words.
Well, believe there was a majority with myself, the mayor, and the vice mayor. And the three of us seem to have the same understanding of the surplus land act. Can I be a test?
All right, I'm bringing my court officer, do you want to say something?
Uh, yes, please. My name is Ian Martin, I'm a resident former planning commissioner. Uh, one quibble I have with the, the element, I think it's an excellent work product, I think the consultant did a fantastic job. Very well put together, very well thought out. There is this matter of the surplus land act. What the, what the two, two of the three sections say, so Vista Lobos, the north and south parking lot, say that, that the city will make these lands available via the surplus land act. But of course, the problem with that is that the surplus land act requires public deliberation for council to say to vote about whether or not to make those lands surplus. So here right now, so an important edit for those all three sections needs to be that in the event, council should decide to make these lands surplus in X, Y, and Z, right? But right now, it's like quicker way to make these available via surplus lands act. Well, you can't just declare that that is going to happen because council needs to deliberate and take a vote. So, um, and yes, in the, uh, south parking lot and in Vista Lobos, it says, um, that council needs to prevent every step of the process, but that language is missing in the north parking lot. And then also, um, the overall tone is that we are going to make this happen, right? And of course, you cannot guarantee that outcome. So I think it's very important to adjust that language. But again, it's a heck of an undertaking, the council's undertaking, the city's undertaking. And the consultants work beautiful and it's very well followed out. It's a 486 page document, so it's a heck of a thing, right? So anyway, important to get this right, uh, it is important to also serve the law and communicate to the state and the community that the law will be followed. Thank you.
And you were, you were expecting issues before it's going to be on the priority list in a year.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I just offer one clarification, if that's okay, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify something that, that Ian said, um, because I, I recognize there's been, you know, a lot of drafts moving quickly. But the, the most recent draft, like what came out of the city council meeting, uh, did actually change that language. So it did say before that we'll make it available through the surplus lands act. But if you look at the current draft that was submitted back to the state, it says that we will make the sites available, which is our E process we've talked about. And that's been, been the plan since early 2023. And the language was moved later to that section that says, uh, if, if they, if they are made available, when they are made available, that all the laws, including the surplus land act, will be followed. But it does not say anymore that we'll make them available in the program language. So it says we'll make them available through the surplus lands act. That was, that was the direction it was coming to the council.
The March 27th draft says this way, says.
Back to council.
Is this on the list?
Absolutely, this one.
We have two days anyways, next Monday.
Exactly.
Okay, moving on then.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So the, the, the next item, you know, we have just incredible array of volunteers and volunteer groups, uh, in the city. And when I look around, you know, in this room, I see, you know, Brittany Rose, the Commissioner to preserve, a litany of people from the CRA, uh, obviously Carmel cares, um, you know, a whole, and, and that, that, you know, we've got the Carmel by the Sea Guard, I will miss a dozen volunteer groups. And so one of the council's objectives, priorities was to try to have, again, we done with that last word, you know, person said oversight, that, that really wasn't the right word. We came up, we agreed to facilitation because it is, it's a two-way street. And so, um, this is, you know, an ongoing effort. If you haven't met Tom Ford, not only is he a rock star employee, well, he's back here in, he's Philadelphia as well. Not why, why hire him. But, um, he, um, he's a great person. He works with, a lot with our urban forestry and, but he also works with our volunteers. Um, and he, along with, with team over here have updated the, uh, the website. So there's a volunteer page, how to get involved. There's a list of, you know, you move to the, you move to the community and you want to get involved in the library. And there's a, a poll down, how you get in touch with. So, uh, thanks to, again, Emily and, and Nova and Ashley and everyone, and Tom about updating that. So again, this is, this is a priority that, you know, it shows at 80%, but it's going to be an ongoing effort. It's not something that necessarily has to be on a list like this. But it's a great effort and, uh, we, we admire your vision, council, and, and we implement it. We're doing a good job. That concludes my comments.
I do.
Hold on. Is there anybody else to call? Yes, you know, in the bubble. Karen.
Um, I just wanted to say this was one thing that I thought was very, very important. I'm not sure it shouldn't just become inherent in every department and not necessarily have to take up a space of a priority. Because it just should become part of how we do business. We facilitate the people that help us do our city jobs better and with more efficiency and more community involvement. I think it should just become inherent in everything.
I agree. I think this is the same, I think the, the reasoning here to agree with Karen is the same.
You get to the mic.
The reasoning here is the same as the Car Week stuff. Um, this is something that I think the city does as a matter of course, uh, you know, throughout the year. And I'm glad that we have this on the priority list for the time that we did it to sort of make sorts of creation of, of whatever the structure there is inside staff. But I also believe it should be, because, I agree. I think three years ago, this was a priority and we hit our priority by hiring somebody like Tom, who does do a great job. Thank you, Tom. But I don't see why it's still on.
Do I present this on that, move that on, go listen? I mean, I've said it's important to you. Yes, sir. Yeah, so this was an item that, um, you know, training, key training overall, you know, kind of waxes and wanes. But this was added and, and this was a, this was a good add council. So, um, Nova's been working with the city attorney, was prepared, there's pictures over, he's, he's only, he's only virtually with us. And we updated the commission board commissioner handbook and, um, we need to do some editing based on your direction. I think that this, this is still a, a very important piece of what the council board commissioner staff relationship is, is about. So, um, it needs to stay on the list somewhere, whether it's hyper, again, you postponed adoption of the handbook recently, but again, that's something we should add. Nova's going to correct everything that's in there.
Now, I just, I forgot to add something to the slide, was just about, um, I'm working with the city attorney to do more frequent, um, training for, um, board and commission members for like Brown Act. Obviously, we're going to keep going with the ethics training that's required every two years and things like that. But we are going to do more frequent, um, other training with them. And, um, so even if there's people that have been on commissions for years and years, we will encourage them to take it just as a, like a refresher. And then obviously for anyone new, it'll be required, um, from this.
Appreciate that, Andy. The county of preferences, I would say that, um, that we offered to hand up the handbook, we're actually leaving it on, but that is a factor.
Agreed. Yeah, I agree with that, but I have a question. You know, the, the handbook came to the council meeting in February and then it kind of disappeared. There really wasn't, there wasn't any discussion about why it disappeared out of the agenda, what objections were. Um, it just kind of disappeared. Do we have a little bit of explanation, you know, Chip or Brian, as to what the issues were with, with the handbook?
Uh, there were, there were some, uh, there were some typos, there were some questions that I needed to answer. Uh, Felipe asked me about, about, um, there was a, a matrix of, of positions, one, one of, one of the reference, uh, the city engineer. So it's just a, it was a kind of clear, I'd be my, my answer to your question.
So when, when do we expect it back? Like is, are there revisions to the handbook? Based on the feedback from council member, Felipe, and others, are those finished?
Brian, are you trying to say something?
Well, um, I just wanted to add that, um, that we'll, we'll be prepared to return that, uh, to you for further consideration at whatever time council deems appropriate.
So it's, I think it's a matter of scheduling, Mr. Baron.
Okay, so we'll leave it on temporarily, but I'm thinking that the hyper is getting on.
I just have one question about it today. So if we're redoing the new handbook and we approve that new handbook, um, I hope it includes an onboarding, uh, type of meetup when a new commissioner comes on, that they're not just handed a notebook, that somebody sits down with them and talks over, um, what that means. So that they're really familiar with their duties, their expectations, how to run the meeting, et cetera. Thank you.
That's a great idea. What you said. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, you didn't open it to the public, sir, I'm, I'm Mr. Martin, this is.
Thank you, Chip. Uh, thank you, everybody. Yeah, back in 2014, when I was, when I was put on the planning commission, I was just like, here you go, kid. And it was very raw, it was very green, as many people will recall, and I had to figure all that stuff out in the pages of the biodeo and didn't follow. Right. So I will tell you what, please, keep the training a high priority for future board members of missions. Thank you.
I appreciate that, what you said. Anybody else? Uh, this council, should we leave it on, but we're going to get it addressed very soon.
Well, again, I think this is one of the things that maybe doesn't have to be necessarily on here. It just be, should become the way we do business. It should become inherent in every department when they have a permission that they're involved with, that that training take place.
It, it will once you establish it.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm not sure we have to, once it's established, keep it on this.
I think you're right. If we get to a steady state, you know, reestablishing by, uh, redrafting the handbook and then we get into the rhythm. But again, what, what you've done is that all board and commission expire at the same time. So we're going to get a new, right? So we're going to get a new, you know, new raft of board commissioners. So we'll, we'll be on a schedule where they're not expiring at different times, we'll be getting new people, you know, if someone goes off unexpectedly. Thank you, council. The, the next item is the ADU ordinance. And, you know, my, my, my excuse, explanation for this one was all HCD's burden with dealing with all these housing elements. And Brandon said, no, you're entirely wrong. There's an entirely separate division or department, EDCD, that deals with, with, uh, with accessory dwellings. So again, we fired off the draft that was, um, reviewed by the planning commission and we're just waiting to hear back from them. And so that was, uh, in the, in the late fall, early winter. So it's time for us to kind of get back on there already on, and say, we're going to get us our comments.
We expect that to be resolved early soon, then?
Um, I, I don't know. With, with, I, I would argue that before we get back to you in September, which would be six months from now, that we'll have a better update, you know, to fill the resolve. Brandon's not even said it, Mr. Mayor, so I think the answer is yes.
Or is there anybody which probably, uh, probably which comments? Something, you know, right? No? Maybe this, okay. We got a question on that one, I think, that's all.
Interesting. Yeah, so the operative word, uh, under this priority was explore. And, um, uh, council member, Felipe, who is the ad hoc committee on street addresses, has done a lot of work. She's worked with, again, public safety, uh, folks in the corner. Mr. Perry, the city attorney, has written, uh, a brief film on, on fire code, building code. Emily Gary has been on point from the staff perspective and she is now an expert in 12,000 pages of U.S. Postal Service Code and manager practices and whatever else. And so, um, uh, the, the exploration, I, I would say, and I don't want to, I'll ask council member Felipe, if you can correct me, but I think the exploration, um, phase of this is basically done and you're poised to present the findings to the council. Is that correct, yeah?
Yes, that is correct. And I do want to, to relieve everyone's anxiety today. The post office sent us a letter that said, if we assign addresses, they will not close the post office. So that is a relief. They will not close our post office. This is not mail delivery. And, uh, yes, we have had, um, a good meetup with the law enforcement in the town and so on. And we will be presenting at a very near council meeting, where the next steps are.
Oh, Adam, did you get, you have some help from Mike Brown, too? I think he deserves a shout out. Didn't he give you some help?
No.
I don't know why you got Mike Brown on it.
No. I don't know, took us up to public comment.
Mike, Mike Brown, I believe, was working with Emily for quite a while.
Yeah, I met with Mr. Brown four or five times. We had Blue Ray jacket, Blue Ray, it's like, um, he'd been working on this for years. He'd been willing to. jacket. He'd been working on this for years. He'd been doing it with me. So he gave this out.
All right, so public, there are many public issues to set up.
A little bit of history on this. When I was mayor, we had a visit with the two top people from San Jose with the post office department and talking about their view of street addresses. And they have obviously no objection. They just didn't want to leak, you know, but it was still, but it'd be the same answer. I don't know. But if, if you have street addresses, it doesn't mean you're going to have door to door mail delivery or even house, house mail delivery. So that is the problem. And the next step for them was if it has to be something door to door, it's going to be those anodized aluminum boxes at the end of each block or every two blocks, which of course raises a problem for people who are not, who are gifting like me, why having to walk a block or two to get to where their mailbox is. So I would urge you, if you're really going to move forward, talk to them, talk to the post office again to see what their stories are now.
Well, I can assure you there is no mail delivery in any of this proposal at all.
Uh, hello, me again. So the post office building, I, I'm under the impression that it's a privately owned building. And I'm curious to know when that lease is up with the post office.
With my two families.
Oh, my two families, as Mary pointed out. So I would like the city to check into that. Because if these families decide not to renew the lease, then what? Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Rich Pecky. The only thing I would say, and I'm on the fence with street addresses or not. I'm really not here to make that kind of decision. But with regards to a letter from the Post Postal Service saying that they would keep the post office in downtown Carmel if we implemented street addresses, that I would think is my opinion isn't worth the ink that's on the paper. Because government agencies are known to change their mind, whether it's next year, five years, 10, 20 years from now. I think whatever decision you make, those street addresses should not take that into consideration at all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a large portion of the city is in a high fire severity zone, the northeast neighborhood. That's been expanded in some of the more recent Cal Fire Maps. We're also bounded by a 34 acre residential nature preserve and that's where our canyon, which we share with, yeah, with Pebble Beach, whatever conservancy is called, Del Monte Forest Conservancy. So this is obviously a, you know, very, very important matter. Brendan and I had on the community government affairs director from Pacific Gas and Electric in our blog last week. I guess you went there. I had her on, Gina Arnold. And, you know, one of my questions to her is, it seems like PGE is moving to this very protective posture. And she said, absolutely, because of the wildfire fires that are happening around the state of California and some of which are caused by the area. So this was added again necessarily. So the first bullet is, I call it a SWIP. And this was actually, we started a few panels here and started working on this pre pandemic, trying to get the three cities, three of the cities that are covered by moderate fire in our partnership agreement, City of Pacific Grove, moderate, and the City of Carmel by the Sea to build up a community wildfire protection plan, which is, has been drafted now, done by a DAP engineer, a consulting firm that specializes in this fair thing. So the SWIP was presented to Forest and Beach Commission, correct?
Yeah.
And, and there's again, Chief Miller's here and Chief Brown. And so eventually, we're gonna have another, another community meeting coming up with Carmelites here. I'll leave this room to talk about it. Again, Chief Miller, Chief Brown, the fire marshal, are very familiar with, again, the necessity to drive around the village, making sure that weeds are knocked down, that spark arresters aren't chimneys. They, they, they will come on to fight the property if requested, but they're not going to go into people's backyards uninvited. So again, I think we're going to see kind of a renewed sense of partnership between both government, which is us, and private property owners. The other, the other element of this is that Ashley and Wanda, Homer, from conserv and the BIPs and the police department, they put on a community meeting on winter storms. So it's disaster preparation, basically. And we have another one of those scheduled for, for June?
June 1st.
June 1st. It's June 1st. You heard it here first. And so again, this is, you know, under the banner of just making sure that we protect ourselves from natural disaster, reduce fire risk, ladder fuel, fire fuel, investing financially into our natural areas and to our landscape maintenance, thanks to Bob and his team and the board of commissioners. So, you know, again, this is something that should be a top priority, but it may fall into the realm of businesses, things that we continue. I think that what happened with some of these items is before, before this current council is here, some of these things just kind of went away. And we forgot about them. So they became a priority based on community input, staff input, council input. And so we reinvigorated our attention to some of these matters. So I think that includes my diatribe on that.
I'd ask, what about the changing format for the insurance that they're making requests of people that can't be accomplishing the social communication, being, you know, removed from the ground out, your house by, to empty combustible materials into the board of fence, those kinds of things, in this communication?
Can you comment on that, Chief?
I didn't, what was, what was the question?
The mayor was suggesting that insurance companies are leaving California and regions like ours because of our urbanized, the nature of our urbanist world.
Yes.
And so what can we do coactively to work with insurance companies with private property owners to ensure that people get insurance for a reasonable price, but also keep their property safe?
I mean, that's a good question, Mayor. And as, everybody here is probably well aware, a lot of your friends and family, but I probably have their policies canceled. And there's really not a whole lot that we can do about that from a fire protection standpoint. But what we can do is make sure that we're interactive in the community and that we're doing our annual fuel reduction and doing our inspections throughout both commercial and residential properties throughout the city. The community wildfire protection plan is also a part of the bigger picture, where we're collaborating with all our partners. But as far as the insurance itself goes, I really can't speak to what their priorities are or how they're going to be looking at each individual property based on what his location is within the city.
I would hope that there's some way that I could see, you know, you guys are probably stuck in a public safety realm, you can advocate for in some form, maybe at the state level or whatever, but I can tell you, this is unacceptable with insurance companies are doing.
I agree. I agree.
Chief Miller, I know you live in Del Monte Forest.
Yes.
It triggered, you triggered something when you were speaking. I was listening inherently. But the, the, what I heard from someone, maybe a couple of them from fire, maybe some kind, is that actually, a community that adopts a SWIP, actually, when you show that to your insurance agent, they're, they're, they're resting more assured that, again, the community as a whole has its arms around the challenges of living in, you know, an urbanized forest. So that's something that I know factually at this point in time, but we can certainly look into it, Mayor, if that would be a factor. I'm happy if my insurance agents and GIs.
I will do a follow up on that. Chip, for sure.
Appreciate that. Everybody, public issues, because.
Amy Toomey again. Part of the fire risks that are a part of our village is tied to trees, as is acknowledged on the slide. And most of us, or many of us, love our trees and want to see them healthy and well cared for. I know that City Public Works is on that path to make sure that they fight dead trees and sick trees are taken care of in the public space. But I wanted to kind of reinforce that it's, it's essential as we look to have a thriving and thriving tree forest as a part of our cultural heritage, as a part of our quality of life, as a part of the walking around in shade versus blasting sun, et cetera. The air that is processed via those trees, that trees are an important part of what is Carmel by the Sea. I'm reaching to the fire, most everybody here. And I just would like to see reinforced as we go forward on this planning, that the right trees are placed in the right place, knowing that trees should not be planted underneath power lines and/or trimmed to accommodate power lines so that they're not in each other's space, et cetera. So again, my message is just let's keep trees and the health of our village and the forest by the sea as a part of the go forward plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody else?
I'm the Ambrosio. I had a smile because my master's thesis was on ensuring, ensuring forest plans in the United States back 50 years ago. Anyway, I would encourage Chief Moll to reach out to friends of the vision trail, H was it, and take a walk with us and see how we've been removing fire fields over the period. Previous chief gave the city and it would be very helpful for us.
Forestry is something that we have a lot of the same between, first we work, fire field, without the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else question?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I kind of disagree with Chip respectfully, but I would leave this as a priority all the time. I think we should be always aware of this, always looking for better ways to protect ourselves. And it just should remain on our list as top, high priority.
I, I would agree. And also, one thing that does bother me is this idea that our fire department cannot go on private property to inspect backyards. I have neighbors that don't clear their downed wood and their weeds and so on. And you're only as safe as your neighbors in some ways. And sometimes the only way for those things to get cleaned up is if people get a notice that it must be cleaned up. So I think in addition to what's on this list, we should be looking at how we could maybe have a blanket legal way of accessing private property that if somebody absolutely doesn't point you on their property, they could opt out of. But that this type of vehicle would make for it to be okay for each property to be inspected if there was either a complaint by a neighbor or if there was specific times that an announcement could be made that the fire department will be coming around and doing their inspections, please clean up your properties, get your spark arresters ahead of time and so on. Because I think every time I open a letter that comes from State Farm, I am shaking. I really am. Because it's, it's critical in the state to solve our insurance problems. But until then, I do understand that the more you do to make your property safe, the better argument you have when and if you get a notice or when you go shopping for new fire insurance. So this should stay a priority just because of our geography, our geography, where we live, and cycles of drought. And then when we get lots of rain and we get the grasses, they grow, we might have to help them twice a year instead of once a year. So yeah, this should remain a priority and it should be continually updated and it should be part of our messaging into the community of the seriousness of this issue.
We're okay. So yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to respectfully disagree with some of that related property rights. And I would not be a neighbor of having a mandatory thing where fire officials go on people's property. It can be voluntary. You can send a note out, but you cannot just have officials going on people's property.
I think, I tend to be more with Karen than Allison or maybe to the way over. But I think that you're, you know, Chip, I think that your comment about, you know, this issue at the beginning is really a policy discussion that the council should have. I don't think that's a staff level. You know, there's a disagreement on the council, obviously, with regards to what, you know, what the rights, what my rights are if my neighbor's creating a real fire hazard. And maybe in, maybe in Pebble Beach, it doesn't matter so much because the houses are, are far apart. And if, you know, if my neighbor's house burns, you know, the chances of my house burning maybe are not on that grade because I'm separated by a couple of tenths of a mile. But we're on foot houses for lots. And if my neighbor's house burns, I'm fortunate that my neighbors generally keep up their property. But, you know, it would be a concern to me. And this is not, with me, is not just an insurance concern. I mean, it's a fire concern. That if my neighbor's house burns, they have pine needles on their roof, on their woodshed roof, or they have, you know, trees planted by the windows and the, and the fire gets inside their house through that mechanism, that really affects my house. And so we, you know, this is a, this is a conversation, I think, that the council should have, not staff. And I think it's important that we sort of get this ironed out. I appreciate that the SWIP is sort of, you know, agreed to between, you know, those three communities, but to some extent, our communities are all a little bit different. And, you know, in the back of my head, I'm wondering whether it's right to have one, one document, you know, one document sort of that applies to all three communities and whether the sort of most common denominator documents such as might be concentrated there goes far enough to protect, you know, all of our homes here sort of from each other.
The SWIP, the SWIP, it's one document sort of with like three different chapters. So it's specific to our village. So it's not a, it's not more, you know, we'll, we'll send that, we'll send that out to everyone. Again, eventually the council will, but it's good reading this year, but it's very specific to our, to our village and unique attributes that we have versus Pacific Grove or moderate. I'm sorry, Chief.
I was just gonna, that's correct. So each individual community was looked at for specific hazards. So it's not just a one blank at all. It's three separate kind of evaluations of the type of hazards that are present in each one of the communities. And then the other thing I was going to say also, if anybody in the village at any time has a concern about a fire hazard, whether it's a neighbor or a commercial property, all they have to do is call us and we will go knock on the door and say, hey, we can advise that potential hazard. We'll try to do it the right way, knock on the door, make communication with the homeowner and see if we can get them to work with us to get that hazard removed.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, for that. And like I said, you're a processor of what you're saying. I think that that might, that might alleviate a lot of my concerns. You know, if I had a neighbor that wasn't cleaning up their yard or something like that. But I still think that that's a, you know, so maybe not 50/50, not 2/1 or whatever. But I think that that's still a discussion, you know, that's still sort of a longer discussion that we might, we might have at a Monday council meeting or something like that, sort of a slightly more, slightly more formal than this, but less formal than, than a juvie meeting.
Yeah. I walked with a resident yesterday and we had a great, a great walk, great talk. She would like to have a lower threshold for business abatement. We were in commercial district, but she lives up there. Then at the Lord's, almost in the county. But it was, it was in the same vein of property management events. And, you know, again, we dig up nuisance, nuisance abatement. It's a pretty high threshold. Our codes are pretty high. Not talking, you know, not being a city mile home. But it's not, you know, it could be more, more rigorous. And that would certainly be a certain, you know, policy discussion that we could delve into at some point in time.
So what are you, are you perpetual in classes kind of program?
Yes, sir. So maybe it's not a high priority, but maybe it stays on the list so we can hear the touch base. And maybe. base, and again, this is the council, previous couple councils are the ones who have been asking more, spending more money into full loaded down shedding, landscaping, and those things that are not only beautification, but they're also, again, fire safety as well. So you'll see that in the incoming budgets as long as we go forward.
Yeah, I kind of like to leave it, you know, I know we're gonna discuss carrying down a high priority, but apparently it can be in the meeting. For now, I'd like to leave it high until I see sort of a, I would feel more comfortable if we left it that way until there was some resolution to the, to this quit stuff, this even the meat stuff, and some progress there.
The, the next item, again, we've got a couple that are kind of in the same vein as the beautification is number eleven, but number ten is the urban forest management plan. And again, you know, this, this hasn't given beautification, and it has to do with urbanized forests, and it has to do with, with safety issues. So, you know, I get, I get wirebrushed by the community on, you know, some people think we've got too few trees, and some people think that we have too many trees, and so my natural question is, guess how many trees that we just finished surveying? How many trees are city trees, city yard trees, people say? Three thousand, seventy-two hundred, we have ten thousand public trees. And that's probably less than when Mr. Di Ambrosio had branded Roland as the Forester. So, and then the next part of the debate, obviously, is are we gonna stick with our big four? Coastside oak, Monterey pine, Monterey cypress, and coast deadwood? With changing climate, what are the trees of future going to be? And so all these issues are being wrestled with right now in the urban forest management plan and our Forest and Beach Commission, who has a committee that's working on elements of it. Just last week or the week before, of course, the beach are reviewing the draft plan in pieces. So they need the first three or four sections, they'll continue to do that. Eventually, this is a plan that will come to the council for adoption, but it's, it's a, it's a high profile, it's a very important element of our community. You know, this is for, that again, I think we were overly, so we're in fact in August when we said we were sixty percent, and we had to ratchet that back. But again, I'd say it's going well, Bob, please correct me if you think I'm wrong, but.
It's not, it's not been going well.
You don't know, just talk. Not too long.
I think it started well, and I think it was a good decision to try to tackle this piece, you know, by taking the technical studies one by one for the Forest and Beach Commission and the Sash hearing committee. There's a lot of, I think, each technical component has a lot of discussion, potential policy issues, that's itself. So we're gonna continue to roll it out. I think we have two or three more technical studies to unveil, but the overall report has still like worked in draft, mostly get done by the end of June, but from there, we have, you know, continued public outreach, continued public peace. Our next public push-up is May twenty-second in this room, so we'll be talking about the , some of the technical, the key technical studies, where we're at. That's where we're at.
I have a question. So until we adopt a new urban forest management plan, we are expected to conform to the existing forest management plan, correct? The one that is in place now until a new one is adopted? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I see some sort of things getting mixed up with some of the new kinds of trees being planted, you know, especially when I see small trees being planted where there's completely blue sky above, which looks a little more like the new plan already being implemented instead of the old plan they appear to, so that's just a comment.
Anybody else? So is the public, is anybody in the public just the same?
And for those, those speakers who are not receiving answers, my colleague Jacob is, so let's see, Bob's right here, and so again, if there are questions that we can't answer in this forum, write them down, and we'll give answers for the benefit of the council and the community, and my dear as well.
I think it's very important that we educate the community regarding problems with trees as far as what to look for. I had one tree that had malaria, I never heard, I never knew what that was. I had another tree that had turpentine beetle, and if we had known earlier the identification markings of these things happening, we might have been able to save the trees. So I don't know if people either attend meetings of, or if you take out ads in a pine cone and show them what a healthy tree looked like and what a almost dead tree looked like, and, you know, the in-between with the turpentine beetle, it was like little white dewgads all along the bottom of a tree, and had, I know, you could have saved a tree. So I think educating the public, not exactly with meetings, but with pictures, might be a good way to go.
Anybody else?
This I think is an extremely important priority, and I thank Karen Toledo for speaking up and also recognizing the problems that are going on in the forest. And the fact that, as I've pointed out to you a number of times, that, excuse me, we live by the current general plan, LDP, and our policies. We don't live by self-projections of what we need in the future, and that's been a big problem, that we have ordinances like, for instance, prioritize a comprehensive tree maintenance and replacement program for our native trees and plants, and something that. Number two, talks about plenty of resources necessary to support forest programs. We're not doing that either, we're not following these things. And I sent you a letter in October, delineating numerous, numerous parts of the code and the general plan that are not being addressed. And my big problem is right now, we're getting a lot of spend for the trees being planted and challenged. There's a story that talks to me about, because they know how passionate I am about these things, pointed out that I have trees, it's a time of change, and I need these trees all the time. And we need to really concentrate on protecting and preserving the forest and enhancing it. And so this guy's idea presents a whole different viewpoint so far than what our forest is and what it should be. It's an urbanized forest, it is not a permanent forest. It's not a forest that's being planted because people think it's a right environmental thing to do, and there's climate change. And this is extremely important, I think that we all need to be more educated about the forest, particularly new colors. So thank you for your comments, Detective, and I hope that everyone starts recognizing that the laws have changed, policies have changed, they are what they are today, and there are the things that should be included, taking proper progress and stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So actually, I'm on Forest and Beach Commission, and we just have a study done by a group that is taking inventory of all the same trees, and you would be amazed at what, how many different trees there are. When I was growing up here in the forties, fifties, sixties, the people planted the trees they most liked, there always were plenty of pines, the oats are by far the most common tree. But it wasn't until eighty-seven, when the Defense of the Forest developed, that it became so rigidly into trying to make it just a few trees. What we're finding from people is that people would like more variety, some of the colors, maybe plants with lots of, and so on. So there isn't, only twenty-two percent in that government of the, but now, only twenty-two percent of people want, want trees. So we have to consider the whole population, not just people who live in the woods, pines and oats and bedlands, which are all vehicles, and the cypress, but there are many other interesting trees. And Carmel, you know, Devon darkened powers who, for Carmel, use the Monterey pine downtown because they grow so fast. And, you know, if you read some of the material, you'll see that that was part of their impetus in doing that. So you don't so much need that now, we, and we do see the Monterey pine, the older ones causing problems just down the street of Kent, was one of the houses that was, the pines fell on. Anyway, maybe we need to look at the local progress.
Is there any answers? Can you guys call anybody else? There's no, we'll give it, tell to your direction.
Jim, I'll go, in this plan, is it possible that we could maybe reduce fees for trimming or have some sort of, like consultation for people, a complimentary consultation on a tree, so that it doesn't cost somebody three hundred dollars to not look at a tree or five hundred dollars to trim a tree? Yes, that's, that's a policy question, absolutely, for trimming, yeah. We, we, you, we're updating our fees now based on our inclusion, so you'll be seeing them as part of the budget. You know, I, I'll always articulate, we provide a higher level service than our contemporaries of the communities, but yes, I exactly sort of.
Well, something like this, I think that people might feel like, maybe their tree's dead, but it's not, or maybe it is, it should be, whatever it may be, but I think if we offer a free consultation for a tree to our residents, it would be helpful to our forests.
I'm gonna add in on Jim, if I could, I think he made an important point, that we're gonna be coming to you over the next couple months with a budget, and every year we bring the full list of fees for you to re-adopt, so we don't have to necessarily wait for this plan to be done for the council to have that conversation, so we can have that certainly in the next couple months as we come to your budgets.
About that last year, for, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fair, yeah. If I may comment on that also, this plan doesn't include what the fee should be, but it's like, like Jim, that it's in the fee schedule, policy decision, the council. In terms of having free consultations, we did that up until maybe two years ago. We had an enormous number of requests to, quote, just come out and please let them trim a tree. It takes time, it takes time. Every single time we have to do that, there's, there's real costs to the city, to get out there, log it in, for the tires, pour back for the first. We used to do that, we did that for many years. What we implemented maybe two years ago now is the, reduce the evaluation, that was, I think, to about three hundred dollars, coming to do an assessment, sometimes, you know, if you write the tree is dead, or maybe perfectly healthy, just trim it, so we can provide the advice. But if we go back, you know, I'm a little bit concerned going back to where it's always a free consultation, it impacts limited forest staff we already have. So that's, again, that's why we implemented the reduced fee for evaluation. The dollar amount of the fees is a policy decision that will, you know, the conversation from that, I thought, and a comment, I think.
First of all, was that meeting, was it mainly second?
Comment, yes. Okay. My, my comment was, I think that Andy and Melanie bring up sort of selling points about keeping homeowners educated about trees, you know, Andy talked about it in terms of illnesses, and Melanie talked about it in terms of health, and I think that, I would hope that the plan, this, this urban forest management plan, would have at least a placeholder section, if not some more details fleshed out about how the city might undertake an effort to do that, whether it's a yearly newsletter, telling people they own property in town, or, you know, I know that stuff like that is expensive, but, you know, we talked about doing that, you know, a little years ago, and prior to the pandemics, and just find why it ever happened. We talked about doing that with respect to building permits in the law, you know, welcome to Carmel, you're all rules about what you can do, what you can't do, you know, sort of get it over the head with a, get it over the head with a two-by-four. Maybe, you know, trees have a lot more impact for most people than building permits, and maybe you could investigate sort of doing something like that as part of this plan, so we could do something in writing.
And I would just like to add to that, many people who, particularly newcomers who have moved here and have lived in a forest, and all of a sudden, they get here and they go, oh, that's a really big tree, I didn't notice that when I knocked this little cottage. So I think education is very key to what it means to live in a forest, and how we respect that. And I also seek to remember that in the notebook about Forest and Beach, is it's part of the Forest and Beach Commission's task to educate the citizenry about the forest, and we have somewhat dropped some of the educational components over the years, whether that's staff time or what, but I would like to see, you know, when we're going over board packets, if there are responsibilities of the commissions to actually do outreach and education, that that starts to happen again. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got our Earth Day celebration coming up, and you're tree planting and there's demonstration, but I hear what you say, I hear what you say, that's all. Spamming on that.
The red-milac and council will lead this one.
Yes.
Okay. Great, Di Ambrosio, one of the things I might.
Great, it's very hard to hear you.
Great.
Great, Di Ambrosio.
You might resurrect, you might resurrect the Out on Limb article that we used to put out every week in the pine cone, and it discussed all those types of things, what to look for and everything, and that's the best part, I felt it was the best way to disseminate within our local community. So I would suggest that you talk to Justin and see if he was, be able to write a weekly article thing.
Right down. It was a pretty good idea. Maybe not weekly, maybe not weekly, but, but yeah, I think I like that. I mean, we, you know, one of the outreach education tools that we do for, I think we've got two million three hundred seventy-three viewers of the vlog as well as the Friday Live, but we usually have a, you know, tool, but this, this is, I remember that, this is great, this is great.
Great move on, Eric.
Efforts.
Effortation efforts, you know, this, this, you know, the editorial on this, again, this comes back to our partners, with Carmel, Karen, and the Gardener, Gardener Club, and everybody else who helps beautify the city, and this has been a priority of yours. Whether it remains on this list or whether we continue to do it, it needs to be something that we continue to do. My walk with, again, a resident yesterday was really kind of based on, this is missing the last bullet for some reason, it's in your packet, which again, we invested a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for landscaping meetings last year, but her request was that we actually increase that, because we, you know, we shouldn't be relying on, on just volunteer groups. So again, that's, we'll be getting a letter from that resident with her ideas on this, but yeah, I mean, it's an ongoing thing, I think it's really asked, we're gaining priority, and whether it's on a list like this, but again, I think we're gonna continue to see if I just have that, that includes my others.
There's something really missing with this priority, and the other half of it is how And the other half of it is how will these efforts be maintained? And I see the city going through this all the time. It's a lot of fun to improve something and to throw money at something and then there's no maintenance to keep it. And I'm very concerned about that. And you know, I'm involved with the Kinnick Halfway and that's the prime example of something that is absolutely fabulous. And thirty-six years later, it turned into quite a mess. So I would like to see the partnership of the two ideas, of beautification effort and how will it be maintained?
Good morning, Dale Byrne, resident but also Carmel Cares. And Shirley, I had not talked since, I don't know, two situation again. So I loved Karen's comment earlier, councilperson, or whatever, I guess I should say, about internalizing the volunteerism aspect as opposed to making it a point, an outpoint. We have bi-weekly status meetings, Carmel Care does the public works. And I think they're productive. It certainly documents what we're doing and over-communicating with the cities and we don't get the situation we shouldn't have told me so. And I think it's been successful. But one of the frustrations for us, because we're out on the street right now, is a group of about eighty-two professional gardeners up the corner of Seventh and Doris, is the city has Town and Country out doing things. And they're doing a great job, by the way, there's a couple of them at a time. They do a great job because we were pulling those weeds a few years ago and there wasn't one. But there's also other volunteer groups. And I do have contact with friends at Carmel Forests and I just met with Greg to talk about what they're doing, try to see how we can help them. But there's lots of other ones too. I think if we had Tom, who's also great, if we could get all of us together once in a while, maybe quarterly, and talk about what each of us are doing, and even Town and Country, Renee, whoever's in charge of that now, say, "Here's what we're doing, here's what you're doing. How can we complement each other?" Because as we go forward, clearly the city budgets are gonna get pushed more and more over time. And it would be nice that we develop that cross-pollinization. The city can't do everything, we can't do everything. And I think that's one of the things that Karen was talking with Chip yesterday, is at times they, the people working downtown, the media minders and downtown detail feel overwhelmed. So if we could just complement each other a little better in a planned way, so that at the beginning of the year, we know what our goal is, what we need to fundraise, what the city's gonna pay for, I think that would be really productive. And it'd also be fun. It would also help each of us to recruit more volunteers, to get more fundraising going and so on. So there's another level of this, but I think that concept would be great if we can internalize it and not have it on the point like Karen said. Thank you. Looks to me like this kind of matters a little bit with the volunteer facilitation and certification. I mean, in some sense, this is a decreased certification effort that really depends a lot on the volunteer committee. Trevor, I appreciate it. I'd like to say that he was coming. Great.
No, I agree too. And I really liked that last comment, Dale, about maybe quarterly meetings between all of the volunteer groups that are working on our national resources. It'd be wonderful to have quarterly meetings for all of our volunteer groups so that we understood what everybody's doing because we often get it secondhand. But I like that idea of pulling in so that we're not competing with each other, different groups for attention or for dollars, but we're understanding what we're doing in our apartment compared to what they're doing. And the other thing that I find might be interesting, we're considering, and this is gonna sound silly, but community calendars help people plan so that they don't have overlapping events. So community calendars serve a vital function. It can also perhaps be developed where we had a who's cleaning what on what day kind of thing. Like if Town and Country is always cleaning this on the third Tuesday of the month, Carmel Cares can let that day go and pick up on the Thursdays that Carmel, excuse me, Town and Country isn't doing it. Same way at Wester Roundtree. If we know when Town and Country is going into Wester Roundtree, we won't plan a cleanup day on that day, or any week, for instance, Mission Trail, because we'll plan one two weeks later so that the garden is cleaned two times a month instead of just one. And I don't know, it's just an idea I'm throwing out there to sort of have a Town and Country schedule of when they're doing what and where. And I don't know whether that's how they work, but it might give us more coverage over each month than showing up on the same day.
I always forget a couple of things every time. Just to show you the potential that this has by all of us working together, we developed a relationship with MPC, which is honoring the new law. UC, college, NPC. We've got a relationship with them where we're recruiting students now and it's a huge potential. Two people showed up, I got them to pull weeds for us the other day. And two guys showed up in their athletes. They'd been working two days straight, put in about ten hours out of their twenty-five they're gonna give me. They've probably got twenty heavy bags of weeds. So if we were all working together, we might be able to get a hundred of those students because there are a lot of them. And the same thing for high school last year. One of our volunteers went out there and spent an hour and a half to try to recruit some high school students, we got like one. We spent a little more time preparing this year and it was really just about what our programs are. And today they signed up thirty people in an hour and a half. And we probably could have got a hundred. So that just shows you that we could have five hundred volunteers in the city working for free if we all were planning it. The other side of it is that Tom's here, he stretches different ways and he's doing a great job. But I think that internalization, that if all of us became more part of the city, the city could be helping us to advertise, to fundraise, to build this into a real part of the city fabric. And I've seen what that could look like and it's huge. So thank you. Thank you, Dale.
Yeah, we're about, we're about an hour from lunch. We're about a third away through the list. Want to take a vibe break or anybody need to get up and stretch and get a couple of pop or something?
We're done.
I'll go, I'll go later, it's fine. This one is Design Traditions. You know, again, this was, this is one where is that classic August versus March. So we've made a lot of progress as of last, of last August. Then we started getting, we started adding in the homework assignment. Last steering committee meetings. And so again, we've done a lot of, a lot of really good, a lot of good work. We're kind of nearing the finish line. Brandon has been pulled in a different direction right now by me over the budget season. So he and I have sufficient time to spend on actually drafting the Design Traditions guidelines. So it's in progress. I strongly believe it should remain a hot, hot priority. And so for those of you, again, I promoted Brandon, he's been working in the acting capacity as Assistant City Administrator since the middle of January. And so a few months down, a couple of months down. And he's also been doing his job as City Development Director. And so with his promotion, he's continued to work that. I think working on getting an interim while beginning an improvement for a replacement. So again, we're all, it's not just him, it's everyone else you see around here has a lot on their plate. And that's part of the reason we're talking about this, right? Again, as I mentioned, our plate, what we got out of it. So Brandon, how did I characterize where we are? And we're gonna make some progress here in the next six months.
That was really good, Chip, thanks. I think, you know, one thing that's important to mention is like you said, for an exploration plan, there was a ton of really great work that wrapped up sort of like the phase one at the end of last calendar year. And we did add some new tasks to the project, like creating a whole new shoot list. We have some wonderful local folks who are gonna help us take pictures, including he and Martin, who's offered to help. So redoing all the photographs in the entire design guidelines. Really what we need to do now is we need to put together all the parts and pieces that we came up with as a steering committee and committee. And that's sort of where the project's at right now. We did start on that, but like you said, I got pulled in a different direction between the housing element and doing this acting role for the last couple of months. But once, I think, once we get the position settled, I'm looking forward to, I'm actually honestly looking forward to getting back to working on this project because it is such a cool project. And it's one that we've all, all of us have invested a lot of time in every year. So yeah, we will, we will pick up some seed even here in the next month or two. And I think we'll see a nice new second draft come out in the next six, eight months.
I love meetings. I'd like to just call out and reinforce publicly that inside the body of this great work that the collaborative teams have been working on, that a side project that also ties back to our housing element is objective design guidelines that is critical for our housing element and that's got to make some significant progress. But my personal belief, without seeing a new version of where we are as our baseline, is that there is significant work as a result of this Design Traditions project that is leverageable to the deliverable of objective design guidelines, which will feed our housing element. So I just don't want to see that get lost in the shuffle. It's really critical for the housing element. And I don't know if that should alter any of the sequencing of what gets done when, but I'll leave that to you guys that are making the hard decisions. Thank you.
That was amazing. Thank you, Mrs. Simms. I mean, that, that was, she looked like a planner. That was, I mean, that's community involvement, I mean, we're getting, that was wonderful.
Nancy could certainly speak way better to this than I can. But my concern is while we're doing this and it's taking a while, the state is coming up with their own version of what we should look like. And I don't know if that's part of this process, Brandon, where you're overlaying twenty things that they've stuck on us that we haven't even read hardly, on top of what we're trying to do to see how it's gonna impact this five years from now? Maybe looking forward to see how can we make sure that we don't get superseded by bills that have already been passed? Because that's a certain part of this. So Nancy knows a lot about that, I know.
We talked about the ADU ordinance a couple of slides ago. And, you know, Brandon, Brandon's drawing a real hard line in sand with the state about not allowing overdevelopment. And so I, you know, we'd have a pretty good fight with them on that, but they understand the nature of coastal, he is like Carmel and so forth with respect to that. But thank you for your comments.
It's been this way, it's made that the design guidelines have taken so long. But, you know, when you open up something, more things come up to be considered. So I'm understanding that. I am very, very concerned about getting these design guidelines out to the public as soon as possible. And I do think that they will help and inform when we do the objective design guidelines because we will have an idea of what the design guidelines are going to do as far as impacting our land history and so on. And that should guide some of the things that go into those objective design guidelines. As Nancy pointed out, that's a very good thing. But I am really concerned, and I like a timeline, a timeline of making and it comes with, so if Brandon can come up with that. It's like, you know, it's going two years and it's time.
Yeah, I agree with Karen on the timeline. Then, you know, Brandon will know this because it used to be that every month I used to ask him what the date was and it was March, you know, this March, and March, 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 and then it looks like sometime in the future. So I would certainly appreciate, I would certainly appreciate the date asking of it too. My comments, my other comments would be that one, you know, a little concerned that this scope of the project is sort of increased past what the council envisioned, I know. And so I would ask, you know, I would ask, I would have a desire to, I would rather see something concrete, even if the scope is a little smaller coming to the council, rather than having the individuals go green, just push the project out and out and out. Because the projects take on a life of their own and eventually they just die. And I was wanting to try to get a little bit of sinking feeling about this one. And why would we wait the more out of, the more, the less fresh the project is in people's minds and the less momentum the project has? Eventually the project will just die and out of it, you know, happen. And I would comment also that, you know, one of the things that's important to me is this exploring space and this designer billboard, you know, pretty much mentioned that every, every time someone's meeting the six months. And those two things are now linked and they were linked because of some shared interests with regards to getting the coastal commission together and also sort of introducing the new design guidelines at the same time we introduce the new designer billboard. And so we put these two projects into the same car or into the same boat. And that second one is also very, very important. So again, you know, let's see a timeline.
I would just like to say thank you, Nancy, that was, that was what I said. Because it is, the objective guidelines are crucial to helping out. And so I think we need to leave this on high priority. We have to have those objective guidelines and help us with that.
I think if I could just add some clarity for those that aren't as nuanced as this, as Nancy is, who was texting, emailing the last minute, ten o'clock, with more wonderful stuff that she and I are working on together. So I do want to get Nancy a lot of credit. She shows up to all the meetings, she answers the call, let me say, get involved and read things and have informed opinions. So thank you, Nancy, personally for that. But just to be clear, the objective design guidelines, those pertain to affordable housing units. So that was part of our housing element. Objective design guidelines are yes or no questions, think of them like a ministerial thing. Those need to be developed for affordable housing projects. Bigger design guidelines, the ones that are what we hold typical for our normal sort of development, those are still subjective and much more broad. So they are related, but they are slightly different. The objective design guidelines wouldn't apply to a typical development of a market rate home.
Were any of the discussions closed? Don't any of the turn of focus?
Yes, we've taken a long time on Design Traditions. But the whole point of what we've been trying to do was to take a set of policies and so forth and make them understandable to the public and also get a great deal of public input. Nancy, along with half a dozen other people, have been very vigilant in terms of attending our meetings and have been extremely helpful in analyzing what's wrong with the old design guidelines and what we want to achieve in the new ones. And basically, what we're striving for is a document that not only educates the public in general, but it also educates commissions and architects and all of us residents. That was a problem with the old Design Traditions. I sat on that committee for two years. And it was a good document, but the problem was no one was taking it seriously. It was not being, it was not being utilized. And we became very, very aware of that, having many of us been on the planning commission or doing property in town or whatever. And it's been an incredible process. It's taken a long time and I know that some of you are extremely frustrated. But the problem of it is, is that once we got into it, it just, it just became more than we needed to do. And when you try to write something that will get the demand of developers, rest. to do. And when you try to write something that will fit the demand of developers, residents, who may or may not be doing any development, and all the stakeholders in a project like this, it just is not, it's just not easy. One of our biggest problems is, we have, for a number of months, lost our key staff person to help us get along. And that's not through anything but just the necessity for him to be helpful in other areas. I mean, planning is, you council members know that. Planning is a very, very hands-on, hardworking department. Not all departments are hardworking. But Brandon has tried to do a number of things for the council, too, that have taken time. So, you know, please be patient with all of us, and understand that he's been stretched thin, but he's been a really great help to all of us during this process. So, you know, if the other Design Traditions committee members have been here, they would also thank him very greatly for the amount of time that he has spent with us, and say that we, as much as you, want to get this thing wrapped up. It's been a long time. I don't think most of you have any idea how many meetings we've had, and how long our meetings are. They're very much like council meetings. So thank you all very much, Brandon especially, and council for the patience that you've shown us today. And I hope that you'll give us a little bit longer to wrap up these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Any other council, council?
I just wanted to thank Melanie for her comment. And certainly, we do appreciate all the work that the Design Traditions steering committee has done, certainly all of the volunteers from our community who have been attending those meetings very diligently. And I still have faith in all of you, and I know that you will get this done. And certainly things will be more difficult with Brandon and the extra work that he's had to do. But I have faith that we will get this done. So thank you again.
I think this should stay on a high, high, high priority until it's done. It's also important for us to know, the committee has ceased meeting. The material is in the hands of the planning department now to put it all together. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the committee, I wouldn't say it's on pause. The work now in the project is to compile all of the parts that we've done. We've affectionately been calling and putting the sandwich together. So we're working on putting that sandwich together, which that is on pause right now because I've been stretching other ways. That's the next task. And once the sandwich, essentially that second draft is put together, then that goes back out, steering committee involved, community involved, city council and all. That's when the action sort of happens again.
But what I want to clarify right now is, because we will be in a search for a new community and building plan, you were integral to this meetup all the time. You were the staff person. You are the sandwich maker. So to speak, it is in your hands to put that sandwich together at this point. And I really like some detail with budget season, starting with all the other things that you have taken on now as assistant city manager, how you can give us, not today, not tomorrow, but very soon, what your plan is for how you can carve out that time to finish this part, because that's what's making me nervous.
I appreciate that comment. I guess I'll say I'm not giving up my subway apron. When I was talking to Chip, you know, over the last couple of months of doing this job, the assistant city administrator job as an acting, and we started talking about applying for it, I specifically talked about this project, that when, when if I were to get the role that I'm in now as assistant city administrator, I still wanted to be, have this be my project. And so I, you know, that was a conversation we had. And in an odd way, this is going to sound weird maybe, but once we get a new director installing community planning and building and not doing both jobs, I'll actually have more capacity to do this. And maybe it sounds a little counterintuitive, but I really will. So I am looking, I am looking forward to this. I'm not giving up my sandwich making apron, I promise. This was one that I, it's sort of like, one of my negotiating terms with Chip in going for the assistant city administrator job, was I didn't want to lose this project.
It wasn't a negotiation. It was very logical.
I would like to debate for the consumption, completion consumption of the regurgitation of the sandwich.
Yeah, because we come back, if you remember, we come back at the next, the next-ish city council meeting with a recap of what we did here. That's all I have the schedule for you with the next city council meeting.
I love me, because I do have a little Zoom issue, it's because I have to go to the bathroom. If you could take just a couple, hold these five minutes, we'll get the audio.
You're out of here anyway, right? With, yeah, had plenty.
You seen me? You seen me? What it stands as well? That occur to you? A better? On the minus sign, is that better? Okay, I'm not hearing you on the Zoom. I should be hearing you, right? One, two, three. Am I too far away from Bill Stone? Okay. Where's Joe Stone? Where's Joe? Still around? Joe, Joe? You seeing this, Sebastian? You seeing this? Which hotels in Monterey? Monris, Monris? What was his name? poker. Oh, really? Rocket has her first tennis match tonight at Stevenson. She will not be a USTA junior. No, she'll crush it. She'll crush it. Yeah. Hopefully. Read the packet on the way. You know, you're exactly right. There's responsibility. You guys, you guys do a lot. Ad hocs, outside agencies, you know, they need to come to the fore too. You're exactly right. Hundred percent. They should be taking the lead on this and not relying on. Right. Oh, thanks, buddy. Well done. Perfect. Thank you. I'll tell the mayor. Yeah, they don't know. Right. We didn't know. Right, exactly. No, it's our responsibility. It's all fixed, Mayor. It's all fixed.
It's rock and roll.
It's rock and roll. We can crank out another four, maybe five. Yeah, thanks.
All right, let's get back to work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to go pretty quick, whatever you can. It's okay, I got it.
Council members, if you'd return to your seats, I'd appreciate it. All right, let's go. Here we go. Okay, we're on to item number 13, is that it? Yeah.
Yes, number 13, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, so Mrs. Moon is, oh, she's back there, but Mrs. Moon, you couldn't be more correct. Dale's safeguarding her.
Hey, let's go. Brandon, if you'd take your conversation outside.
Mrs. Moon couldn't be more correct that when you, when you, when you do something, when you build something, you have to maintain it. And Mayor McLeod's still here. So 20 years ago, we redesigned and rebuilt Sunset Center. It was an extensive process, a lot of community involvement, a lot of fundraising from the community. We're still, you're still servicing the debt. But things are now breaking. And that's because it's 20 years old. So you see a lot of projects up here that Bob and his team have replaced the boiler, which we didn't fix 20 years ago, the fire fuel pump system, you know, a litany of, litany of things. So again, Mrs. Moon is exactly correct. So one of the things that we have done is we've done a facilities assessment. So we know what the condition of all of our vertical infrastructure, our buildings and the like. We've done one for storm drains. We don't own the sewage system. Thank God we don't own that, because that's an ongoing nightmare. But yeah, so, you know, we're always, we're planning improvements, and we're also rebuilding things. So this is a very relevant topic. It is ongoing. One of the most important buildings is behind Mr. Varan and the mayor, the main branch of the library. So Ashley and the library board of trustees are going through a master planning effort now. You'll hear about that from Ashley, and maybe Mr. Crisher, who's the chair of the library board, on Tuesday, the second. But that, again, that's a document that will help inform the evolution of the library from the physical sense, and maybe the organizational sense, how it operates. And, but also, again, educate us on future capital work. So, you know, again, I view this as a priority of getting to a plateau so we at least knew what our infrastructure exposure was from the facility's standpoint. And now we're pecking away at it. Obviously, on, the days blend together. I guess on Tuesday night, you reviewed the capital work for next fiscal year on a, you didn't make a decision, but looked at what we were going to reinvest in. So an important, an important priority. Again, I think that we're in a pretty good place from the knowing what our exposure is standpoint. And again, you'll continue to see budget line items for our facilities in the future capital project proposals. And I think that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Comments from the public? Anybody in the public? We should speak to the side. See anybody? Nobody on the Zoom? Okay, let's move back to council. Direction, council members? Direction, council members?
Well, my comment again on this item would be if we've developed, if we've developed a maintenance plan, like developing a maintenance plan is different from following a maintenance plan. And if we've developed a maintenance plan, then I would ask that we, I would think that we would remove it, uh, from this list.
As long as implementation was followed, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, and so we try to try our recommendations back to policy documents. Obviously, some people are critical, not just in this community, of why are you doing all this planning work or design work? Well, again, it, it, if, if we can say, well, here's our policy document, here's why we're recommending that we spend capital in this particular way, it serves as a touchstone. So, um, I agree, um, please disagree, Bob, if, if you think. But again, I think we've got a good sense of what our exposure is. And now we're, we're pecking away at it through the implementation phase, through the capital work and through our maintenance budget.
So that would be, we can't, you would be okay with us removing it off of the list? Like, is the, is the plan mostly complete?
Go ahead.
It's, I mean, it said, right to Karen's point, it says fifty percent. So what, fifty percent of?
Yeah, if I may, uh, facility maintenance is gonna go on forever. On Tuesday night, we had a list of, um, I think it was council member Dramos request, what buildings do we have? We had, what is it, um, thirteen buildings, eight of which are at or close to a hundred years old. That's a big deal. Uh, seven, uh, public restrooms. Most of the buildings have a condition assessment done from, uh, twenty thirteen to several in twenty twenty-three. That really is the genesis of plan. We could staple them all together and call it a plan. It's a big list of what needs to be done. There's another element about maintaining what we have. We have bits and pieces of, of maintenance plan. The problem is we have two facility maintenance workers and a, uh, we, we do have a, uh, I wouldn't say an adequate budget, but we had a, we have a budget. But things break down every single day, including on weekends. It, it doesn't care. So we have a non-stop reactive phase. It's very hard for us in our situation now with these older buildings, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of buildings with two people and a budget to be ahead of the curve. That would be nice to be ahead of the curve and be able to maintain things that we have. Like a new car. New car, you know, oil change, you keep it maintained, you change the windshield wipers, you keep it in good condition. We don't have that luxury here. We have older buildings with, with, uh, elements that fall apart every single day. So we do the best we can with what we have.
But do we have a plan? Like, that's the, you know, this item says facilities maintenance plan. Like, I appreciate that you're, you know, I appreciate that you're reactive. And that may, it may always be the case that you're reactive.
Correct.
With respect to our older buildings sort of failing or toilets clogging or whatever.
Right.
Or the buildings de-painting or something like that. But that's part of, as we've talked about earlier, that's sort of part of ongoing, you're, you know, sort of the ongoing work that staff does as opposed to developing a plan.
If I may, I, I think we have something better than the plan. Condition assessments that identify each and everything that needs to be fixed is a step up from a facility maintenance plan. We know what we need to fix.
In other words, we could just take this off the list?
I have no objection.
I don't have any objection.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank Chip and Bob, and I appreciate, uh, that chart that you made in that, uh, CIP presentation we had a couple of days ago. That was very helpful. Um, I would be fine with just having it as part of the CIP. It's obviously very important and something we need to stay on top of and not allow our deferred maintenance to fall behind, because that's how we get into more expensive, uh, fixes down the road. Um, so thank you for what you're doing with that.
So you're, you're exactly right, council member. It's, you know, and it's, you know, you get a constituent who says, shouldn't we do X? And if we continue to say, we have this deferred maintenance, so we're gonna continue to work on this. Um, and, and, and we all have to exert discipline in that regard. But, um, yeah, that's exactly where we should be going, so.
Don't, don't the items in the assessment plan, aren't, aren't those the, what we need to be working on? No, we don't need to work on developing an assessment plan. We have it. We need to put those assessment plans to work.
Right. And that's what you see through the CIP budget and the maintenance budget on an annual basis.
Yeah, and, and occasionally that maintenance plan will, you know, will need an update if you've added things to that that are big ticket items, of course. And just, you know, maybe a quarterly update as to what has been accomplished on that facilities maintenance plan, so it doesn't go away. Uh, we constantly are aware of what's been going on, but it doesn't have to stay.
You're, you're exactly right again. You know, we, 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 we had to use outside professionals to do an assessment of all the buildings and, because we didn't have one. So again, what we inherited, and we say collectively, we, is we didn't know what our exposure was, what the conditions of the buildings were. And so we were constantly reacting because something would break. But we had no idea there was a hole in the roof or what have you. That's a dramatic example. And we didn't actually have that. So I shouldn't have, that was a dumb example. Um, so, but, but anyway, so those kinds of things. So again, not always being reactive. So now we have a plan and we can pack away at it. That's why you see the big five-year CIP. It's not just for, uh, the, the urbanized forest or our pavement or our storm drains. It's for the vertical structures, the thirteen buildings we own as well.
Right. Cut to Rich.
Uh, Rule, Rule twenty-eight, twenty-eight, if anybody doesn't know about Rule twenty-eight. So, um, this was, the CPUC many years ago put a tariff on, uh, on electrical bills for all the major utilities. If you're in Southern California, it's whatever, Cal Edison or something, I don't know what they're called, but Pacific Gas and Electric is our investor and utility. And, um, and, uh, it was, it was a tariff that went on the bills and then the money, the money flowed to jurisdictions to do beautification, to underground overhead utilities. And that program's now ended. And, um, so there's, whatever money each jurisdiction has is all they'll have as long as they set up an assessment district and they work toward an undergrounding project. We have lost money in the last several years because other jurisdictions had shovel-ready, uh, projects and assessment districts established. Um, what the council has done for the, for the community's benefit, we have an ad hoc committee of, um, Mr. Barron and, and council member Dramoff, um, that have, uh, we've identified two potential assessment districts. Um, one would be to underground the utility line on Eleventh that goes into the Mission Trail Nature Preserve. There are seven poles there. So on a, on a, on a very wicked slope. Uh, it's not the most scenic resource, so we don't know if it would fit PG&E's criteria. The second one is on Del Mar. And so what the ad hoc committee is doing is they're doing their own homework right now as well. So looking at, um, we're not spending any money, but what would it cost the private property owner to underground the lateral, the service lateral for when the, you know, the wires underground to, to the individual properties or houses, um, working with PG&E? So it's, it's a good project. We got a, a statement yesterday, kind of like you get a bank statement. We got a statement from PG&E. We've got six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Six sixty-eight.
There you go. Six sixty-eight. Um, we don't know whether that'll complete a project, but, um, again, it's, it's a good project. It's, uh, um, it's, it's plugging along and I'm hoping in the next several months, we'll, we'll be able to, within the next six months, we'll be able to bring a project to the council for decision. We have to have an assessment district established by the end of this calendar year or there's the potential for our money to be reallocated to other jurisdictions.
Um, I'd like clarification on that. Do you, uh, I know at the council meeting, there was no firm decision between the two that was the ad hoc going to explore it. But, um, is it possible to just adopt both of them, which would lock the money in and then go on to figure out which one is better and do all the outreach? I'm concerned about not getting that locked in in time.
It, it is possible to do that, yes.
Yes. When we, when we had this discussion at the council meeting back in December, I think my objections in December were that it's not, it's not just, you know, once you adopt an underground assessment district, a whole bunch of things start happening. And those things happen to homeowners. So it's not, you know, homeowners are sent letters in the mail. Homeowners are given instructions about what they can and can't do. Homeowners are told things, that the city is doing things. And so, you know, if it was a question of simply drawing out some districts on a map and saying, yeah, we're gonna do this and this, that would be one thing, but that's not what it is. So I think we, you know, I think my objections then and still are is that there's a whole chain of events thing that starts to happen. And so we really need to be, uh, really careful, um, with regards to sort of what we do there.
And I'd just like to add to that, um, and I do agree and share with, uh, council member Baron his, what he just stated. And my concern at the time, also why I wanted to put it off, is that we need to do outreach and education to those homeowners and that had not been done. So we did not want to get ourselves locked into something and then have, uh, irate homeowners going, wait a minute, what did you just do? You know, because it's gonna impact them and their properties. So, um, we're trying to take a slower approach, do the education and the outreach, but keeping in mind the deadline by the end of the year.
Public comment? Is there anybody in the public wish to comment on the side? Last call. Right, see no one? Cut to Rich. Council, any other comments?
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, I would just add that later on in the, later on in this list, we're gonna talk about undergrounding all the power lines in the city. And my view is that this Rule twenty-eight district is a perfect way to sort of stick our toes, stick the city's toes in the water and find out how it is to work with PG&E, how it is to work with a contractor, how it is to work with homeowners and sort of figure out whether, you know, this is like the first step to the big project. And so I'm, you know, I'm a little skeptical, but I'm also, uh, pretty excited about the opportunity to, to do this sort of exploration.
Good, thank you. All right, let's move on.
Are we leaving, Noah?
Yep.
Uh, so, so the next one, and we'll, we'll, again, we'll do a reprise, uh, after lunch and on all of them. And we've got an interactive, uh, Emily and, and Nova developed an interactive sheet where we can do a kind of a score sheet, so we can see real time what's gonna drop off, what's gonna remain a high priority, what moves to a lower priority or vice versa. So, uh, develop and implement a social media plan. You know, again, this one is, um, you know, we, we do a lot of education and outreach. Um, we're, we're, we're not gonna be a TikTok, uh, city or Twitter or something. You know, in the last year, last year, we've updated the website. We have constant contact, um, uh, distribution of information. Uh, you can sign up for listserv as whether you're interested in, um, you know, a whole variety of city topics that we're working on. Uh, we, we updated that whole little, that see, click, fix thing on, on the website where, again, you see something, take a picture of it, it gets sent to the, a, a clearinghouse. I think it's her. She's the clearinghouse and it gets sent out to the responsible department and then we fix it and they get, the, the, the respondent gets a, a response. Um, Emily uses sick, simple, uh, simple texting to the council for updates, uh, once a week, once every couple of weeks or something. Um, that, that is a vehicle we could use, uh, with, with the residents. It would be a lot of information gathering because it goes to cell phones, but it might be something we could use in the future for storm events. I know that's, that's, you know, that's at the, at the heart of this. Again, it's public safety during storm events and getting information out to people and they don't have internet access and they can't get our witty vlogs and the like. And then, um, yeah, those, those email listserv. So, so, yeah, that, that's kind of in a nutshell, the way we understood the, the priority. Again, um, Ashley and I have been debating for a decade now. Again, we're not gonna become a Tic Tac family or Instagram or whatever, MySpace. I think Paul's on MySpace. And, um, so, because we don't know what our residents are gonna access. And with those platforms, you have to have a constant, you know, constant communication. You can't just periodically do a MyFace post or whatever they are. Um, so, so, yeah, that's where we are with that one. Um, it's a, it's a work in progress. Uh, we get, we, we actually, we get new people adding to the Friday Letter, which comes out once a week, right? Every week. And we, you know, people love the vlog for whatever reason. But, um, yeah, we're always looking for new opportunities, but we don't think that a traditional social media platform is for us.
Comments from the public on this item? See anybody? All right. Back to council.
I'd like to say that when Nancy Toomey posts on Facebook, I read it. And, uh, she has a lot of information on there. And, um, I think it would be valuable particularly, um, to alert people to public meetings. And, um, people can sign up if they want and they can delete if they want. You're not gonna be a bother to them. But it might be something to start trying to create a, an email list of residents and so forth. It, you know, that is a huge task, but you've gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I would add, you know, to Karen's comments that, you know, Chip, I think that the, the view that you, the view that you espouse about, um, social media being back and forth and back and forth is, is not one that I necessarily agree with. I, I view social media, you know, I, I'm responsible for this from five years ago. I view social media as just another avenue to connect with people. And you use, you know, you use to great effect the Friday Letter and, and the blog. But, you know, Karen, Karen speaks about Nancy's Facebook page and there are a lot of people that use that. And not, with the city not having a Facebook page or not having some avenue like that, you are missing, you know, people under forty, um, that don't read their email or people under thirty that, that just don't read their email or that don't have a place to go for sort of news that, you know, news that is timely for a couple of days, um, a couple of days and so on. And to your point that, to your, to your statement, that Facebook is interact, you know, needs to be interactive, you could turn comments off. Like, you don't need to, you know, it doesn't need to be a forum that, you know, Emily, Emily posts some, posts something on and then monitors for responses. It can be a forum where you just post a meeting notice on it. You know, Thursday is a Forest and Beach Commission meeting. And then nobody responds because there's no ability of, there's no, you haven't provided them with an ability to respond. So I view this as a communications channel, even if it's one-way, um, just like, just like the Friday Letter is or, you know, when people don't hit reply. Um, and, and I think you're, I think that the view that you, you know, that, that's a little bit wrong.
Ashley, real quickly, Mrs. Toomey.
So, I mean, one of the things that I've, I've, as, as we've had this conversation, as you say, for five years, is, is, uh, consistency in messaging. When I've talked to other cities who have engaged in social media, um, you know, the, not horror story, but sad stories I hear are a department has a new person that comes on board and they're super gung ho and I'm gonna post everything to Facebook. And a year later, they're gone and it just sits there dead. And so that trust you've built up with the community is now gone because the staff behind aren't trained in it, they don't have the capacity, and that goes away. So consistency is key. And so the thing that I've been championing is not, not so much, don't do Facebook, is we need to make sure that we have, um, a staff member, whether part-time or full-time, that helps the current staff maintain that consistency in messaging. Consistent language, making sure that meetings are posted, making sure that we have standards for these things. Um, that is the kind of pass-through person for it. I think that's really important, whether that's somebody that comes on. I can, the Carmel Public Library Foundation just engaged somebody from CSU MB to manage, um, their social media posts and to an extent, the libraries, so that we have consistent messaging about our programs and these are going out on a regular basis type of thing. I think that, that piece of it's really important. And what will need to happen is that the council needs to prioritize not only this, but allocating some funds either to a part-time staff person, or I know consultant is a bad word right now, but a consultant to come in or a contract person to be that standard bearer for all of us and help support us in getting that messaging out.
Yeah, I guess my, my, and I, you know, I don't mean any, I certainly do not mean any disrespect. I think that the Friday Letter is, uh, is a pretty astounding, is a pretty astounding piece of communication. And when I look at it, um, there's a lot of effort that goes into putting together the Friday letter, Friday letter. But that, the, you know, the Friday Letter wasn't set up because of a council priority. Like, it was set up, if I, and you can, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong. It was set up, you know, when, when Chip came to town. I think he got this idea from a sort of a previous city administrator, like maybe it was Doug or someone that had sort of done this thing twenty years ago. And that previous, that Friday Letter has sort of grown into the behemoth that it is now. And we didn't do that. Like, the council didn't do that. You did that of, you know, you did that of your own accord. So I would, I would take a little bit of an issue with your putting this back on us, saying it has to be our priority. I mean, it's, you know, you run the city, you do the communication. Like, our charge to you is to do communication. And for all the effort that goes into that Friday Letter, maybe some little piece of it could be deflected into, you know, could be diverted into some social media channel, even if it's just like getting your, getting our feet wet a little bit, you know, turning replies off, not worrying about what people are gonna say, just becoming sort of experienced with it. Because there really are people, you know, we talk a lot about community and family, you know, trying to get families here and the people under thirty really don't read their email. And so there's a whole segment, you know, there's a whole segment of people that we are missing by only, by only reaching out on these one or two channels. And so, you know, we, we should, we should think about that, you know? And I know it's hard. And I know it's hard for us that are, you know, sixty, sixty-year-olds to sort of do that, but, you know.
Jeff, can I just ask you a question? When you say social media, are you mostly on Facebook, or are you talking about other things? Maybe Jeff, maybe Chip could just send his letter to Nancy Toomey, and she could post it on her Facebook page.
Well, I think to Bobby's point, I mean, I think, you know, I think to your point, you could post a Friday Letter on Facebook.
Yes.
I mean, you can, like, it's fairly easy to, you know, use Mailchimp to, to just create a link and post a Friday Letter, and Mailchimp will store it out somewhere. So that would be a really good, like, really tiny first step. And I think once you do that, you'll start, you would start seeing ways to sort of make that outreach a little better. Like, and, you know, to Bobby's point, and people not reading their email, nobody's going to read a Facebook post that is 6,000 lines long. Like, that's not, you know, if you post a Friday Letter to Facebook, nobody's going to read it. But there are, but does it start? And you, you know, you kind of figure it out as you go, just, you know, in small steps.
Much discussed, Nancy Toomey's trying to say something. Excited often.
Thanks. So that, you're using my name on this, and yes, I, yes, I administer the Carmel Residents' Facebook page. And I monitor it for, you know, good and bad, you know, comments, et cetera. I don't allow, you know, heavy promotion on that site, you know, I'll delete it if somebody's overly aggressive with anything in that regard. And I do post a lot of the, especially the city council meetings. And it's important to note that, again, I'm on it, and keeping it clean and appropriate all the time. And it's important to note that other people who I've authorized to do so, especially the first time in, I've got to OK them to post on that site. So other people, whether it's the library, or other organizations that are doing things, you can post on that site. The first time you go in, I've got to bless you as being an OK person to post. And then if I see you doing stuff I don't like, I'll let you know. But it's not just me that needs to post. I post frequently on that site, so, or a Facebook page. And I only do Facebook at this point, I just, my plate's a little full, so I don't do other of those venues that are social media. But I encourage other people to go ahead and post on that page. And again, if I don't like what I'm seeing you do, and it can be a discussion, so it's not just me being, having a big hammer on, on anybody at all. I want to, you know, so if you see me pushing back on something, you know, talk to me. I'm available. So just wanted to clarify a couple of points, that that's the Carmel Residents Association Facebook page, where that information exists, and it's a pretty lively discussion, and there's, you know, events are posted there, people's photographs are posted there, so it's a whole community-wide, with different angles and information being shared there. This meeting was posted there a bunch of times, et cetera. So, you know, I welcome others to participate and not have me be the only messenger. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. Anybody else?
I knew about this meeting.
I agree with Jeff. I think that was well stated. We've been doing Instagram and Facebook at Carmel Cares for a number of years. Facebook, I've been told by Kelly Burke and others who do more than half the posts, is the way to go these days. I mean, the Facebook for the kinds of people we're trying to attract, which, people my age, but also trying to get younger people involved, we just went over 1,000 followers, and we're not spending any money on advertising. You could, we could spend very small amounts and probably get 1,500, but we're trying to have it be organic. But we're gaining like 50 a month, and we have a marketing person who's our volunteer, who's been trying to get some, get Kelly and me organized and standardize the branding a little better. So we could probably have 1,500 followers, so I imagine if the city did it, you'd quickly go to 2,000 followers, you could get the whole city involved. I highly recommend following Jeff's advice.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, I think Jeff's idea of sticking the toe in the water is a really good one. And if, at the minimum, we just posted all the city meetings on Carmel City site, not Carmel Residents, but Carmel City site, and then also plugged that information over so Nancy, or whoever's doing the CRA can repeat it. But just getting the word out about our meetings would be a great start, and I agree also, it should probably be no comments, because that would eat up staff time answering every single thing, or correcting things. And to start out, no one except Emily, or whoever you deem responsible for putting those meetings out. I really enjoy getting the text each week about what's coming up. It's just short, sweet, gives me an idea of what other commissions that saw in our meeting. So, yeah, get the, let's get our toe wet at Facebook.
Yeah, I would, I would, one more quick comment, you know, to Dale's, to Dale's, like, Dale, you'll forgive me, comment that I'm trying to, we're trying to attract old people, I think those were his words, and you'll forgive me if that's not, if that's not the case. That's not my goal here. Like, my goal, I think the goal of the social media program should attract people that are not following the city in some other way. So if, if the people that read Facebook are the same people that read email, Facebook is not the right platform. Like, it would be good to say, you know, yeah, look at the city's Facebook page, we post all this information. And I agree that that's good for a marketing brochure. But what I'm, what, the perspective that I come from is reaching people that are not connected to the city. And I would, you know, I would say off the top of my head that Instagram is a better, and I understand that, you know, there may be a little more work involved with Instagram, because you have to find a picture. But Instagram may be a better vehicle to, to, to find those people that are sort of missing out of the city sphere than, than Facebook. And I don't know, you know, Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, you know, Instagram is the one that sticks with me, but I don't, but that's my.
All right, well, Andy, go ahead.
I think just like you were speaking earlier about the gardening and maintenance of Carmel, and coordinating all that, like Dale said, I used to own hotels in Carmel, and it, I was always frustrated that the marketing, when people come to town, you have a ready market of people who might decide to live here, might decide to volunteer here, like, with the golf tournaments, might decide to give money, because everybody loves this place, it's on the map. I don't care where you go, who you talk to, everybody knows Carmel by the sea. So I started working with the Carmel Chamber of Commerce, and coordinating things with them. And I think there is a lot of opportunity here to coordinate on Facebook all the media that is available here, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, the Hotel Association, the government, there's, there's a big opportunity here to coordinate that when you do do this.
Thank you. All right, bring it back to counsel for direction, recognizing lunchtime has arrived. I'm sure we're all starving, so, certain direction on this.
Could I just make a quick comment? I certainly wanted to thank Nancy for the work she does, posting on Facebook. I think this is important, I think we've had a good discussion, but I think we should take this off of our strategic list and just give it to administration. Ashley had some good points, Chip, you've been working on it, Emily, others, and just let them handle it, maybe they could give us an update of quarterly, or, you know, six months or so, how it's moving forward, but I don't think it needs to stay as a council priority.
I agree. What's the direction?
I would agree with that.
Okay, good direction then, okay.
I would agree, I would agree to move it, but only if we get some reports about what you've done about it.
I mean, you could keep it on as a low priority, and then, you know, wire brush me in August, if we don't, if I don't make any progress. Is that where you'd have that instant monitor? We can get something stood up by, by August, September.
All right, okay, August deadline.
Thank you.
All right, good, okay, we're going to have lunch now.
So we're going to keep it on for one more meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, and you want for lunch, half hour?
Yeah.
We'll return it then at 1:10. Thank you.
Can we take our seats, please? Quiet in the room. Thank you very much, friend.
Thanks, buddy.
All righty, moving on now.
Yeah, moving on. Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick word of thanks to Emily and Nova for lunch. Well done. It was really... Take some home. There's a lot left over. Great job. Thank you, guys. And Bravo's in the room, so don't harass the dog. Don't harass the puppy. Yeah, we have to... We got to kind of blaze along here a little bit, so I'm going to jump in. You know, the background on exploring parking and traffic management, we had a colleague who was working on this, who retired, and Chief Tomasi has been here for about 100 days. And Chief Tomasi has been here for about 100 days. So it's still on our list of things to do, which is to come back to council for some, no, no decision, but some initial direction. So I think that this one, we've not, we've not made any decision one way or the other on this topic, on this priority. So if we could keep it on, I'd be grateful. And again, as soon as Chief Tomasi, we have other things that Chief Tomasi is coming up to speed on, like the flock camera system. We have an ad hoc on that. So again, this is something we're working on. We need to, we need to close the door one way or the other, just not today, please.
Anybody in the public want to talk to this item? I haven't seen anybody. All right, bring it back to council. We have direction.
Keep it on. We have, we have, we have to eventually get to the bottom of this, so.
I would like to leave it on.
All right.
We paid for it. You know, we're leasing the equipment right now. We might as well either put it to work or put it to bed.
We're talking about the parking.
I thought we were talking about flock.
No, we're talking about parking. So it's our Parking and Traffic Management Program. The thought is, Chip, are you gonna bring this back to council when? For direction up or down?
Within the next six months. Before we meet again on priorities in September, which is six months from now.
I would make it a lower priority. I don't see any, anything I'm hearing from the public that, that is feeling this is something that we should have as a high priority.
I agree.
Well, I also think, though, that when we see the budget and we go more through the budget and all the expenses that are on there and all the wants and all the needs that we have, we should continue to keep this as a high priority because it may be the saving grace. We don't know yet, but it certainly should stay in our purview as to what it can bring in.
Two are saying low, one is saying it's a high. What did you say, Jeff?
I was talking about the flock camera.
I know.
As far as parking, I would say low.
We got three on low.
Well, what I would ask is that we, you know, I mean, I can count the, I can count the two as well as anybody. But what I would ask is if we're gonna dispense with this, that we do that at a regular meeting and not here.
Right.
So I would say, let's just keep it on the list, and at some point over the next six months, we'll hear it. And if we're gonna throw it out, three or four, five or six months from now, then we'll toss it out and it'll disappear off the list. So that would be what I would ask.
Okay. We'll bring it back.
Yeah, moving on.
The Scout House, so we got some direction from you recently. The Scout House is, is a sound building. Before Max left, she worked with our insurance company. We have a new roof on it. We've got new scuppers, downspouts, and the like. It's in, you know, it's, it's, it's heated at 66 degrees. You know, everything's fine with it. It's gonna take a lot of work to implement, and money, to implement anything more immediately than the 25, 26 budget cycle, which is just a year from now. So our recommendation is that this move to a lower priority, to explore the options that the council directed us just a couple of months ago.
I don't know, Bravo and Solo, I think they are Richard Crayman though. Maybe give it to Richard Crayman of the project. He's not here, but he's got his name all over it.
Yeah, Mr. Crayman.
Signed it to him.
Yeah, he's in Japan. Again, I think that, and we talk on a regular basis. I think he'd be fine as long as it doesn't move off the list entirely. I think he'd be okay with it moving to a lower priority for now. But again, we'll bring it back, we'll come back in September and see where.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to this item? Yes, go ahead.
Who owns this Scout House right now?
Nobody, ma'am.
So it's wasted real estate that you could use for your housing.
We could run the mic, please.
Mrs. Condray, you have to, so Mrs. Condray asked whether it's vacant, surplus land, she asked, and, and if we could use the site for housing. You know, the answer's kind of yes and yes. So that's where we are. And that, that was one of the council considerations, again, moving the house to another property and either redeveloping or doing something else with the existing parcel.
I'm a little lost. I mean, those were the five options that were presented to us at the last, at the council meeting, right?
Yes.
Well, we eliminated some of those things. Like, we did not, like, my recollection, and I'm sure my council members should feel free to correct me, was that option number four was sort of the preferred option. I mean, we definitely did not choose renovate as a CIP project. And we definitely did not choose reissue the RFP, did we?
No.
Or just, oh, I mean, we made progress that's not indicated on that slide.
Well, no, you, you selected the option number four, and it's built into the five-year CIP for next year.
Oh, never mind. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, yeah.
So it's consistent.
I mustn't ask too much for lunch. Thank you. Apologies.
All right, we have to correct.
Enhanced fire ambulance service, again, you, Chief Miller and Chief Brown had to leave, but we are working with them very closely. We're working with our organized labor. Chief Tomasi is not here, so again, something is coming up to speed on. But this is something that you'll, I believe should remain a top priority, and you will be hearing about it probably well with, well sooner than six months. One of the next steps that we're going to do now that, that everybody's back in the fold, if you will, is reestablish our, our ad hoc committee plus, which was council member Richards and retired council member Tice. So council member Richards with members of the community, Mr. Toomey was there, Mary Ann Chikatans, Bill Doolittle, a litany of other people. Bring them back together. Have Chief Miller come in and present to Brandon and the chief and I, and then, again, come before the council for a recommendation.
Jeff Barron's on that.
Pardon me?
Jeff Barron was on the ad hoc, the new ad hoc.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Great. Okay, I apologize. We'll...
Anybody in the public coming on this item? I don't see any.
Speak of the devil. Coastal engineering, we got a great report from Mary Bilsey, really a healthy discussion to council the other night on, on phase one. And, you know, we're, we're moving into, into phase two. It's, it's an important priority. Whether it needs to remain a top priority for purposes of this exercise is really kind of a policy discussion with you. And again, if there's any council, community members who aren't aware of this, we're happy to sit down with you and not maybe take the time today, but we've done a lot of legwork. Bob's done a great job facilitating this project. We did get grant funds from the California Coastal Commission in the, to the tune of half a million dollars to move into the next phase. And this, again, the, the data that comes out of this analysis will, will, will inform future capital improvements. So again, I don't know if necessarily it has to remain a high priority, maybe moves to the low. But again, the next phase, which we're working on right now, we'll have a better update for you at the September priorities workshop.
Any public comment on this item?
So what are we doing?
We got one.
I'll do a little. This is really important. One of the many factors that attract people to this village, whether you're a resident or a visitor, is our beach. And this has got to stay very visible and very actionable, et cetera. So I, you know, put my hand up for, for that type of treatment. The other thing that I would just add as a question is, with this phase two that has been kicked off, when do we expect that to, yeah, what's its timeline? I guess maybe I forgot that if that was provided in the session, so that you can kind of give us a sense of when the deliverables are in this, so that, again, as we look to significant investments to retain seawalls or whatever is the right treatment that's decided on collectively, that we have some visibility on when that will start to impact our planning horizon for investments, et cetera. So I'd just like a refresh on that. Would be helpful. Thank you.
Good question. If you wouldn't mind, if, maybe we, unless it's a real short answer, just because of time, Bob, I apologize, we can add it to the questions. Again, what we'll do in reprise is, again, we'll come back at a future council meeting. It may be May, maybe, whatever the month after May is, June. And then, you know, synopsize what, what you've said here, and we'll add, these are all questions that we can answer. One important note here is the council was very devout last year in saying, "Let's not just put capital project money toward planning. Let's invest some in the actual infrastructure repairs." And so that's a bullet up there, so again, council had the wherewithal to do that, and that's part of our, our capital work program.
Questions? What do we want to do with this? Want to leave where it is, right?
The bulk of this work comes from a consultant that is paid for by the Coastal Commission, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I would just opt to leave it. Let's...
May I make a comment? This is Laura Povessi. I'm a resident here. And I'm, can you hear me?
Just up a little closer. There you go.
There. And I'm sure if my husband was here, he'd be telling me to sit down. On Tuesday, I watched this presentation, and two things stuck out to me. One was that of the 500,000, only 50 is going to staff here. The rest, I believe, does not come to our city. The second is, it was all for planning purposes. None of it was for doing any real work. I was really shocked by that. Yesterday morning, it was so beautiful out, I went and walked our beautiful beach when the tide was way down. You can see a lot of the destruction. The gentleman who presented said that once a bluff is gone, there's no bringing it back. And there are bluffs now, down by eighth and ninth, that are gone. I'm sure you're aware of that. You saw the same presentation. It just really concerned me that so much emphasis is being placed on future planning without, as a theme has already emerged, the emphasis on maintenance is, I think, lacking. So I wanted to make that comment. And again, thank you very much for this forum. And as I was impressed before with the safety meeting, I'm very impressed with the quality and commitment that you all show. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. And just to clarify, so the, the, the city applied for the Coastal Commission grant, so we received the money. We don't have the techno plus, we don't have geotechnical shoreline PhDs to do the work in-house, so we, we did use a consulting firm. We get $50,000 to pay for our staff. But the Coastal Commission was, it had to be used for planning purposes. That was a grant condition. So again, the benefit of this, the homework will be done for future information, how we can rehabilitate the work that, again, my, my good colleague Greg D'Ambrosio behind you did in the mid-1980s, so. But it, it really should remain a high priority, council.
Okay. Any consensus? And Nova's in South. Good.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, our, our financial policies, this is, you know, we could spend an hour on this. You know, we, we just got our new act for you'll accept the audit on Tuesday. We were, we were, we got a grant, we got an award again for our financial policies and practices, which is wonderful. No audit findings, which is obviously always a good thing. We've had that for close to a decade now, I don't know, six or eight of them or something. But, so, you know, this should remain on the list, this should remain a low priority. We don't have a, a full-time finance manager right now, but when we get that person, Brandon and I will be working on, on coming to you to update our financial policies and, and review them, so.
We launched the recruitment on Monday.
There you go. We launched the recruitment two days ago. If you've any financial managers, financial, finance directors that know local government, because our accounting system is entirely different than the private sector, please send them our way.
All right, any questions? Any questions from the public? Anybody in the council, direction? Could we do the recommendation?
Keep it low.
So right now, it's gonna stay at the same status?
That, that's what we heard.
Is the priority low or regular?
It says low on there, and here it says regular.
What sheet?
The sheet.
Emily, what do you want? Low. Go ahead.
This is not, just, you know, we haven't mentioned it before, but this is not the first thing that has said low up there and regular over here. I think the social media plan was the same way. So it might be worthwhile to, like, do a cross-reference at some point.
Consistent.
We didn't, we didn't really have three specific tiers last time, such as high, regular, or low. So that's why there's some say regular and some say low. I apologize. But once we get to the end and we go through the list, we can make it so there's those three levels, clearly.
Or two, ideally. Thank you, council. You know, we, again, we could spend a lot of time on, on the police department building, police department, Public Works building project. No defined project at this point in time. Big field trip tomorrow. You have to have already been signed up. Brandon will be there, the mayor will be there, Mr. Barron, who are the ad hoc members for this project. And then we've got 35, 32, 32 people coming on the PD field trip, broken up into short, smaller groups, 10, 10-person. And then we only have about 10 people going to see the Salinas facility. But again, this is all part of the information gathering stage. We're also trying to schedule right now with the ad hoc, bringing the, the architect, who did the assessment work. Again, no, no plans, no design, no preferred project site or anything yet. That'll, that'll be probably in the next month when we bring that outside consultant and all the sub consultants to all those specialists, right? The structural engineer, the geotechnical engineer, the HVAC specialist, to tell us about the, the status of the current building, and then what, what we can or can't do with it, and answer questions. That, that'll be a very public meeting as well. So again, this is a, I, I certainly believe that this should remain a top priority, a high, the highest of priorities. And I'm sorry, Chief Tomasi will be there as well tomorrow to, to show you around, and Bob. So, so yeah, so this one, I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time. We're, again, still on that information gathering stage with the ad hoc committee.
Anybody in the public wishing to speak? Why can't we build wide open?
Mayor McLeod's gonna ask why we can't build over the patio. We can.
Why can't we build wide open above there instead?
We can, ma'am. We, we, sorry. We, we can, so one, there's, there's basically, again, there may be more options out there, but the ad hoc at this point is looking at three options, and they're in no particular order. Number one is expanding the existing police building over the patio deck. Because again, it was originally designed to, to house another building on top of it structurally. And so we have a structural engineers looked at that. That's an option. Another option is to demolish, demolish, but again, Bob's building and Paul's building are hooked together structurally. Not just with structural steel and concrete, but the HVAC system, electrical system, plumbing system, they're all connected. So can we not, you can't just chop it in half and demolish half of it. Can we remove the whole thing, and is there the site available to build a new police department and/or a public works facility on the exist, on, on that property? And then a third option is another site. It's not gonna be Rio Park. It's in the floodplain. Someone mentioned that earlier. We're not gonna do that. We've got another project that's coming up that we'll tell you about for the Rio Park property. But there's, those are the, kind of the options right now. Again, no decisions have been made. We're still on that information gathering stage before we go out to the public and share what we've gleaned.
Any other questions?
So my question is, why weren't these kinds of options? Why didn't the project with the police station start with these kind of options? Why was there an ad hoc committee with two people that involved no residents that spent $300,000 for an architect and $129,000 for a consultant? I, I, I just don't understand the process, the lack of transparency. And what is behind us is behind us. But what is really important to me as a resident of Carmel is that from this point forward, I don't care if it's cell towers, I don't care if it's broadband, I don't care if it's addresses, I don't care if it's the beach, that as a city council, as a mayor, as a city administrator, and whoever else is involved, that we as residents should be involved before consultants are hired, big money is spent, so that we can give input that will help direct you, and you can enlighten us as to why you choose to go in these other directions.
Anybody else wish to speak today? Okay, so the question is, do we want to keep this on the priority list? I would say yes. I would say yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Explore opportunities for permanent outdoor dining in the downtown and/or downtown master plan. You know, I'm a planner by trade and training, so I, you know, I kind of like planning. But a downtown master plan is a major, major endeavor. This is a low priority. I would not, I would not queue it up any higher than that at this point in time. You know, I was the one who, now in retrospect, obviously, made the mistake of allowing restaurants to go outside during, during the pandemic and opened up a bit of a can of worms, even though we kept those people in our community who are most vulnerable, the people who wash the dishes and cook our food and everything else, maintain jobs and keep our local economy going. Not for the benefit of, I mean, it benefited the city, but that wasn't the purpose, it was really to benefit people impacted by the pandemic. Nevertheless, we, you know, everything's kind of moved back inside. Brandon's office has worked on all those other items that, quite frankly, I allowed outdoor speakers and lighting and extra signage and A-frame signs. And all that's been kind of brought back in and been approved through the planning commission, through the use permit process post-pandemic. So, you know, I'm not sure if this is a priority of councils anymore at all at this point in time, but I certainly wouldn't recommend that you elevate it to anything lower than a low priority.
I concur, in fact.
Anybody in the public question to speak to this item? I'm afraid you've not did this for the, and it's already being used outside by the coffee company.
Mayor McLeod's going to ask about Carmel Coffee Roasting on Ocean Avenue. There are, the property line for that property is the face of the building. And again, if there's a code compliance case regarding people being out on the public right-of-way, then, then we'll address it. But, you know, our code requires that all businesses be done within a fully enclosed building, but there are some exceptions, like, you know, nurseries and restaurants that can, through a use permit process, get approval to have outdoor seating on private property. But we'll look again at that one, Mayor McLeod. We're like connected at birth. It's mind meld.
Anybody else? Does anyone want to bring it back to counsel?
Yeah, my suggestion would be, most of the restaurants that have private outdoor dining space are either making application to expand that or are using that space, which is perfectly within our code, because they have private space available. I would say, you know, I've been a proponent of a downtown master plan, but at this point, I think it could wait and it might be something to bring back when we start to make more outreach to some of the downtown property owners with regard to maybe expanding some of their office space and so on for affordable housing. That would be an opportune time to maybe consider a master plan that would envision some of that, where maybe a one-story would become a two-story, maybe a specific block would have a specific plan. But I think that our affordable housing plan could have some influence over a downtown or interest in a downtown master plan. But I think for right now, the outside dining is working the way it is through the system.
One of the other aspects that we're, we're working on, and apparently the chamber did hire a new executive director, I've not met the person yet, but Brandon and I have been working to establish a commercial property owners association. So it's not the business owners necessarily, but it's the commercial property owners, because hopefully the property owners themselves will have the vision to expand, whether it's for housing purposes or, you know, just facilitate, you know, these kinds of additions and alterations to their, to their properties, so.
So counsel, what is the pressure? I mean, let's go ahead and I'd say, let's leave it at a low.
I'd keep it low.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I fall flat on jokes on this one. I mean, again, we purchased it before Brandon was born, before Emily and Nova were born, before Ashley was born, not before I was born. We bought Flanders Mansion 1972. It's in fine shape, it's not leaking. We've got, you've all seen my highly scientific, is the foundation moving pencil mark on the wall. It's not leaking, it's kept at a constant, good temperature. We went through an exercise a couple of years ago to look for conservatorship. It would be a massive undertaking from the capacity standpoint to, to maintain this at a, at a, at a high level, at a priority level. So my recommendation is, again, it stays on the list, but in the next six months, which I want to focus on right now, is not have this be a priority for the next six months. Let's come back in September and maybe it moves, maybe it gets elevated at that point in time.
I've got a question. Brandon, could I ask you this? One of the things we discussed with the affordable housing is an option, it's almost like a rooming house where there, people can stay in different rooms, and then there's like a main kitchen and a bathroom. Why couldn't Flanders be converted to that?
That's a, that's a really good question. So, and I've, I've had a lot of people ask this. When you submit a housing element to the state and you have your, your site list, or we call it like the opportunity sites, they look at that list from the lens of how likely is a site to be developed? And they actually now, because HCD has these, you know, they've stood up these, these separate departments for reviewing housing elements, they go back through the history of sites and all this. And so Flanders Mansion, given that it's a historic resource and it's had, had the history before, it was lower on the possibility site. That doesn't mean it couldn't, so it doesn't mean it couldn't be added on there in the future. Like if we get halfway through the, the planning cycle and it's four years later and, you know, some of the sites haven't bared fruit or they're not working out, then we can always, that's the thing about a housing element, is a, is a living document. So we could possibly do that. But from a, just getting the housing element certified by the state, they looked at that one and said, you know, the other city sites you have on there are more viable. They look at viability, the possibility that it might come true. And that was lower on the list of viability than others, just given its history and historical significance.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public question to speak to this item?
Oh, thank you, thank you, members of the council and citizens. This is project at Flanders is what I call a Sisyphus project. And if you know anything about Greek mythology, you know that this Greek named Sisyphus had to roll this huge, heavy boulder up a steep hill. Just as he got to the top, every time it rolled back down to the bottom of the hill. So he started, he rolled it up again, that's all he, that's all he did, that's all he does, rolls that heavy boulder up the hill. And just before he gets it to the top, it rolls right back down the hill. That's Flanders Mansion. If you go back 35, maybe more years, it's been, and longer than that, our property. And so I want to relate it to a successful project you've had in Carmel, because it entailed the city government and the citizens. And the citizens got together and solved the problem. You're sitting in the building that accomplished. It was done with citizen help. And there's a group of people that are, are sitting now trying to figure a way to how we could get the Flanders Mansion either, and brought up the code and someone living there and having very small, such as activities in one of the rooms or two, small photography lessons, artists learning how to paint, those kinds of things, a book club, small groups. We had a great meeting with the residents, and frankly, I was surprised the number that turned out. That was really very well done. So we're just starting to reach out. So here we are, we got a committee of citizens in the, from the area that are interested in helping the city solve a problem you've had and never been able to solve to this date. So what they're looking for, I think, is cooperation from the city, recognition that if we work together, if we work together, you might just be able to solve that problem and keep that damn boulder at the top of the hill.
Hey, is anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi. Chip, members of the city council. My name is Gerard Rose. One of the recurring problems in Carmel by the Sea is that we have an asset that is one of the most beautiful in the entire entirety of Monterey County, but very few people know about it. And that's Mission Trails Park. Karen Ferlito knows all about it, because she lives very close. But it's one of those things that most tourists never find their way to, to explore or to enjoy. Excuse me, I'm losing my breath. When Mayor White was the mayor of Carmel by the Sea, there were at least two proposals to rescue the Mission Trails Park, which was falling into some disorder. And there were also at least two proposals to save the Flanders Mansion, which was badly deteriorating and still is. I was on the city council for 10 years, and we had at least one proposal to do something with Flanders Mansion, but it came to nothing. Basically, there are three different kinds of proposals to do something about Flanders Mansion. One of the proposals was just to sell it outright. And that, that idea has been floated a number of times, and the residents of Carmel by the Sea have made it clear that selling the mansion outright does not work. Another proposal was to make it a home for artists or even public employees. And that, that proposal never worked out either. So now, 25 years of more deterioration since I was on the council and Mayor White was on the council, somebody finally came up with a plan, a program that might be able to make a difference. And basically, what that plan was, was to bring in the citizens of Carmel by the Sea and have them meet with Mayor White and me and see if we couldn't come up with a program that would keep the residents who, not only who live in Carmel by the Sea, but in some of the residents who live outside what is technically the city, but close to the Flanders Mansion, and see if we couldn't make something beautiful out of Mission Trails Park in the area of the Flanders Mansion. So Mayor White and I have conferred with various people, including Mike Buffo, who's in the back there with the, with the folders. And we have an idea that maybe we can make Flanders Mansion useful. I'm a historical buff, that's why I bought all of Alessandra's books. But the most important thing is to get the people who live near the Flanders Mansion on board. So before we did anything specific, we talked to them. We called them in, we had meetings with them. And, and now that we've spoken to the neighbors, we think we know what people do want and what they don't want. And what they do want is for us to talk to the city about saving the mansion, restoring it. We've got a wasting asset that needs to be rescued. And that's what I propose. So we have specifics, that's what, that's what those green binders are all about. We have specifics in mind, and what I'd like you to do is take a look at our proposals and to give us your thoughts, because you are the guardians of the city, you are the guardians of our properties, and you are the people who can save this wasting asset and turn it into something that's a gift for not only the residents of Carmel, but for other people who like to walk through our properties and especially through Mission Trails Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Thank you, Gerard. Thank you, Ken. City council, mayor, Chip, staff. I have been dreaming about what I'm going to say most mornings right now. And I'm going to angle this a little bit better. I'm recording this for our website, CarmelOutlands.org, and for our newsletter, The Outlands Journal, and for the announcements that we are going to start making. What this is, this plan has been workshopped. Every two weeks, we've been meeting in Ken's living room, this committee, the Flanders Mansion Restoration Committee. And we formed a nonprofit organization called The Carmel Outlands, named after the historic home of the facility, the Outlands and the 80 acres. It's really exciting, and this is such a relief to me to, to print these. I have one for, I have seven copies, and I'll give them out in a minute. And I'm going to set this down. One of my board members the other day told me, Mike, this is long, but concise. I don't know what that, if that makes sense to you, but you've done a hell of a job here. The committee has inputted, has reviewed every word of this. This plan, just to, just to sum it up, it's, it's comprehensive, yet it's flexible. It meets the needs of the, of the residents. They want it to be a home, so it will be primarily a family home. But the public wants there to be a public benefit. The city wants to leverage it somehow. And so this is why my little spark of an idea has, has, has become this, this flame is because we have the technology now. We can have private events, have some people on site, but have the majority of our attendees come in remotely, online, with remote attendance. And so our events in the great room will have a great capacity to do that. And maybe one day, we can do this, this meeting there or other types of facility meetings there. So small groups, city groups, also causes that we believe in. All of us are a part of so many different causes, but we could use this facility to do that. We can leverage it and get it, get it humming again. So to do that, we've got to tell a story of why. Why is it important to do this? So as a visual storyteller, I'm committed to continuing to tell the story. And the, the story is really working through me, and that's my pledge, is to continue to be the, the champion of this. And what I've realized is that this, this is way bigger than me. This plan is not about me, it's about the committee, and it's about a nonprofit organization of devoted people to restore and maintain it and put it to good work. So I just want to just emphasize that all we need is a small sign of enthusiasm from the city. Our donors can't pledge without having the city's full support. So we're asking you to work with us to, to establish a special purpose fund at the community foundation. And that's the final document here, it's the final appendix, and it's two signatures from Mayor, Mayor Potter and, and the city administrator, Chip Rarick. So we invite you to work with us, to the Flanders Ad hoc Committee, to meet with us, and let's, let's look at this. Let's, let's go through it and come up with a, any terms that need to be adjusted. I think you'll find it's, it's, it's comprehensive and it's ready, it's ready to be workshopped. And is there anything else that I'm leaving out? It's 50 pages of just the master plan. There's the design guide, there's two forwards. So if you only have time to read the first two pages, it's the two-page summary right in the beginning. But if you do have time, I think, I think you'll, I think you'll enjoy it. Each chapter begins with some poetry inspired by Carmel by the Sea's romantic history, and it's been a lot of love, and I give it to you, and I hope we can meet soon. I'm going to pass it, pass it to you, I'm going to pass this out. Questions?
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Is anybody else wishing to speak today? Thank you.
Greg D'Ambrosio. Good afternoon, I'm Greg D'Ambrosio, Vice Chair of Friends of Mission Trail Park Preserve, more commonly known as Friends or the Vuittes. And I started as forester for Carmel by the Sea, conceiving of and building most of the parks and trails in Carmel more than 50 years ago, and was one of the first people to walk into Flanders when the city first perched us. From the moment I started creating Mission Trail Nature Preserve, I was, I've considered Flanders and the Leicester Roundtree Garden essential elements of the preserve. Today, I'm here to present a proposal to annex Flanders into the Mission Trail Nature Preserve and restore its historic significance. Friends is an all-volunteer 501(c)(3) that has been working diligently for 15 years to restore and protect the Mission Trail Nature Preserve, which some people like to call Carmel's Central Park. We have a long, a long and successful track record in proving the... We have a long, a long and successful track record in proving the preserve and including removing invasives, greatly reducing fire fuels, improving the walking trails and chipping them all. And we've planted scores of native trees. We have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to accomplish these efforts and we have forged an excellent partnership with the city throughout the years. Here is some of the key takeaway points regarding our proposal to making Flanders an integral part of Mission Trail. Friends would secure a long-term lease with the city to ensure that we were responsible for all the efforts. This would alleviate city's burden and open the opportunity for local funding to be fully tax exempt, tax deductible. Friends would be responsible for the Flanders restoration with a highly reputable historic building architect. Our proposal requires no changes to existing parking. Everything would stay as it has always been. This is a very important component to the Hatton neighbors and to our efforts to protect the integrity of the preserve. A change in parking would require that new trails be implemented, which can further disturb damages and damage the preserve's natural ecosystems. No fencing will be implemented around the Flanders. If another proposal is considered or if Flanders were to be sold, inevitably a fence would be the implemented and for privacy or functionality. Any fencing will force preserve walkers to regularly park in the Flanders driveway, to park up at Hatton Road and then walk down to the trails that do not currently exist to access the preserve. Also, fence, a fence would cut off the Leicester Roundtree Native Plant Garden from the Mission Trail Nature Reserve. My fellow board member Laura Bowling will now speak about the Conservation Fellowship and Caretaker Program that we envision as a key component of the proposal. We look forward to meeting with each and every council member to explain and discuss our proposal in more, in more detail. Thank you for our consideration.
Thank you, Greg. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Bowling. I'm a proud board member of the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Reserve. I moved to Carmel six years ago from Washington DC. I've been in the environmental conservation space for about 15 years. So once I settled in, I knew I wanted to volunteer and get back to the community. So in 2018, December of 2018, I submitted this proposal called Outlands for Carmel, which, like Mike said, I took from the original ground name where Flanders had been established. I'll put this a little bit heavy. I came in third for this RFP, but what that did was open the door for me to meet a lot of new neighbors. First among them was an esteemed lawyer and fourth-generation Carmelite, Skip Lloyd. Skip invited me to join the Wheaties Brigade and that's what I did. So for the past five years, I pulled invasives, I've scrubbed up fire, you know, fire fuel and helped the team plant new plants. And what I've learned is that Flanders is inextricable from the Mission Trail Nature Preserve. They are truly linked. Over the course of time, I also learned that best practices for land trusts are the idea that you never want to create an inholding. You don't want to have any kind of separate island created on a public land space. That kind of thing can interrupt wildlife and habitat safety and it's also costly and difficult to maintain. We think it's time for a fresh proposal. We think solving Flanders, the Flanders puzzle comes down to taking the example that all of us have seen in national parks, states, city parks, all across the country. And what they've done is they've entrusted this kind of effort to local supporters, particularly local supporters with a true, a proven track record like the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. Friends is an established, 15 years running 501(c)(3). We've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for the preserve. We've put in tens of thousands, probably more, volunteer sweat equity hours to restoring, cleaning and preserving the Mission Trail. We facilitated a comprehensive biological research project and assessment, which has absolutely guided meticulous work in terms of what we've done conservation-wise since 2016. As Greg mentioned, we've transformed the beauty and the accessibility of the Mission Trail. It's groomed, the trails are chipped. And what I love most about it is that we've created in a, you know, just serene, beautiful environment for our neighbors to really enjoy. And lastly, we formed a really good partnership with the city of Carmel by the Sea, a collaborative, longstanding, working relationship. With this strong track record, we think that Friends is uniquely positioned, you know, to take Flanders on, it's listed on the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and to safeguard the Mission Trail and the Leicester Roundtree Garden. Under our proposal, Friends would secure a long-term lease with the city and establish the Friends Conservation Caretaker Fellowship. The fellowship would have two distinct phases. The first phase of the fellowship would identify an individual to help lead the professional restoration of Flanders, beautify the adjacent landscaping and actively contribute to the daily care and maintenance of Flanders and the Mission Trail. The second phase of the fellowship would establish a standardized process, which Friends would oversee, for selecting future caretakers who will live on the premises for a set period of time. And we would provide opportunities for professionals in the field of forestry, wildlife conservation and climatology to assist in the continuing protection of the preserve. I really need a glass of water. Pardon me. Our Friends proposal has, thank you, Marco Rubio. Our Friends proposal has multiple benefits for the community. It will benefit the immediate neighbors living on Hatton and adjacent to the Mission Trail. Flanders Mansion would be a low-impact residence. It would require no new fencing, it would not have any kind of public access facility, and there would be no need to change any of the parking, which is something that's really important to those neighbors. It would benefit our broader Carmel air, Carmel community by opening up the experience of caring for Flanders Mansion to many people. And this is a really key thing. We think that this is, both the reserve and Flanders is an opportunity to bring the creativity and vitality of multiple people to bear through this fellowship program. It restores a deteriorating, deteriorating city asset and creates a dedicated steward for the park, which will help create a strong, seamless connection to the Bridge to Everywhere Project as it progresses. And lastly, we think it benefits you, the city. This takes a huge burden off your busy plates. It puts the responsibility in Friends' hands to manage and to fundraise for all of these efforts. We are convinced that if we don't, we're convinced that any other arrangement risks permanent disconnection between the Mission Trail and Flanders. We would welcome opportunity to go into further detail, share our proposal with you and talk through any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anybody else wishing to speak today? Last call, anybody else? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay.
Well, we certainly thank the speakers. I, I think that, that the fact that we have at least two interested parties is indicative of the fact that a much more iterative process like the council went through a couple of years ago to find someone to steward, curate, occupy the resource would be in order. The question comes down to whether you would like us to spend capacity on that now in the next six months or whether this can wait until we get some other things, higher priority items off our list and address it in, in September.
Councilmembers, questions, thoughts?
I appreciate both groups that spoke and thank you for the time and effort you have put into this and, and you clearly care. And this is going to be a big decision, but Chip, I know what you're saying as well is that it's always comes to a matter of staff capacity and priority. Right now, unfortunately, we have so many other things going on that I don't see keeping it as a high priority, but something that we can maybe push back a little bit, but also, you know, soon address, but maybe just not quite now.
My thought is that we do have two proposals that are interesting to look at. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I just think we had to try to give them some credibility. I'm not sure what we should do as far as going to hit same priority higher, but I do want to make sure that we don't miss this opportunity.
So maybe a way of, of cluding that out, Mayor, is, is, you know, maybe Brandon and I, or whatever, someone and I talk to the, to applicants and say, "Does it kill your proposal to wait until September or is it, is it imperative that we do it now?" And then come back to you-
We have an ad hoc committee, I think, which consists of Council-
I apologize, so for everyone's benefit, there is an ad hoc committee of Councilmember Dramoff and Mayor Potter that are working, you know, are assigned to this project. I apologize, Mayor.
When, can I ask, Mayor, when do you, when does the ad hoc committee, when do you think you could come to us with something?
I don't know, it's a good question, Alessandra.
We haven't even met yet, to be honest with everyone, so I'm not sure. We do have a lot going on and then budget season comes around June, so I would say we'd probably have to be after that, Mr. Mayor, if that sounds okay?
July or August, could we have a meeting then?
That's feasible.
Pardon me?
So let's go, let's say the ad hoc will meet with staff until I or August to go ahead and come up with, once we get through this budget cycle.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Let's entertain these two options and see what else is out there, what the process would look like.
Okay.
Would you, I guess my que, sorry. My question would be, do we as council members have the go-ahead to talk to the applicants on our own? Like, would there be objection to, should we just be quiet or become, you know, kind of curious?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. Would, would Brown Act restrict-
Would be a serial, would that be a serial meeting or something? Brian's out there.
It, it wouldn't be a serial meeting. You, you have to disclose that you met with the applicants when it comes to decision-making time, but you, obviously, I would never recommend that you share your feelings about a proposal or proposals with any, anyone, any applicant or fellow members of the council.
Brian, council.
I think Brian has worked something up about this.
Brian.
Well, I would just add that what, what Chip just said is accurate under the Brown Act.
Thank you, appreciate that input. All right, so we can, we can go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my, you know-
He, the, the city attorney said that what I, he, he agreed with me, believe it or not. So it's, yeah, what I said was accurate, so that's what the, the city attorney said.
We talked a little bit, you know, a couple of hours ago when we were talking, I spoke a little bit a couple of hours ago when I was talking about the Design Traditions Project, about sort of projects losing momentum and, you know, sort of falling apart. And it seems like both of these proposals have, both of them seem to have put some thought into them and, and maybe a way, you know, for me as a council member to sort of keep the momentum at least alive, if not, would be to just chit-chat. So that's my thinking, not in terms of just reading the proposals and, you know, providing feedback to them, you know, things that I see as red flags. I mean, you know, the, the proposals are pretty different. I think also that it's, it's hard to imagine how this is really going to work. I mean, last time we had a, last time we had a, an RFP process with a number of applicants, you know, we set aside some standards and, and I would also really like, you know, this time to see that sort of happen top-down like it did last time. So it's hard to reconcile that with the proposals that we already have. And so I'd like to just be a little more comfortable with it.
All right, with respect to that, I think that makes sense. So we go ahead and continue this till, till I or August for Republicans to allow the opponents to speak to councilmembers in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I would say that one of the components of moving towards either proposal or even a third one, if it would come up, would be we need to know what happened in the past with regard to Flanders Foundation's lawsuit, what was determined by the vote of the public. We need to know all those things because we need to know if either or both of these proposals fit within the parameters of those previous decisions and how they would impact testimony that came out of those decisions regarding parking, public access, events and so on. Because we can't really evaluate either proposal until we know the facts of what we have to have that designed around.
Yes, I think that's really a great cue. So Emily went to law school and she's reviewed both Superior Court decision, the council's actions to actually withdraw approval of their SEQA document, their environmental document, Mr. Pirik has as well. So they're familiar with the, you know, the, the kind of the legal history and the settlement agreement, which is most important with the Flanders, Flanders, Flanders Foundation. So yeah, we can, we'll, we can put that in a synopsis for you as well.
Yes, and when and if it does come back, we need a field trip there as a council together so that we see the actual conditions. I happened to take a little walk-through the other day when I caught Cleve up there doing some maintenance. And it's not as bad as it's made out to be. It's really not, so-
Yeah, and we offer, you know, I, I have a key, so if anybody ever wants to go there, call me and pick me up and we can go up. Council, a lot of the council members and I have been there.
We can do that during the same time we do the bridge walk.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I add, if this is coming back, because I don't want it to lose steam while we have two interested parties. So if, if we do have an hour, we do have an ad hoc, can you explain maybe to me and the public what that ad hoc is going to look like? Is it going to be two council members, five members of the public, all of the public? You know what I mean? Like, when, when, when can we say there'll be a first meeting of this ad hoc committee?
Not until, not until, until I-
Yeah, after, after, I think what the mayor and Councilmember Dramoff, who are the ad hoc committee, are saying is after we get through a budget adoption, so looking at, about, I'm looking to both of you, to August. And then, you know, traditionally, what, what we have done with some ad hocs is we meet kind of internally with the project team and then open it up to members of the public for information. But it, you know, there's no, there's no rules regarding those kinds of things. So that's what I would imagine we would do. And again, we've got a, we've got a rich history and the most current history about the failed conservatorship. A lot of lessons learned and several of you were council members when, when we did that, that episode.
All right, do we have direction then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have six more items to go. We, we were advertised to go from 10 to two, now after two. Is the council willing to go finish up this agenda? Okay, we're going to go ahead, we'll continue on.
Yeah, and so what, what we can do is instead of doing the, the matrix at the end, maybe what we do, looking to you, to you ladies, maybe we bring the matrix back, you know, based on what we've, we've heard and then the council can tinker with that, so we don't have to take any more time after we, so we've gotten some thumbs up and thumbs downs here. Undergrounding power lines, Mr. Barron spoke to this. I mean, we're using the, the Rule 20A, which is undergrounding, as a litmus test and experiment, toe-in-the-water, sand, whatever it's called. And so, you know, my, my suggestion here is to leave it on your list because the, the Rule 20A undergrounding is going to help inform the veracity of a citywide undergrounding. And again, I'll look to Councilmember Dramoff and Councilmember Barron to, to, if, if you agree with me.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to kind of just hint to the public that we're talking about something that's an extreme amount of money. And as Jeff mentioned earlier, this Rule 20 group that we're working on will sort of be a, a test case of if this is something that's feasible. But I just don't want the public to have unrealistic expectations that this is something that can be done citywide or that can be done quickly. So we're, we're still going to be in the fact-finding mode through our work with the PG&E committee and that will provide us a lot more information that we can share with the public about the reality of whether this is something that can be done or as in previous years, that it's been decided that this really cannot be done, it's not feasible.
I would like to know the date certain by when we have to make the decision about protecting the money.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that's December 31st of this year. That's not this priority. That was an earlier one for the Rule 20A. And, and Mr. Toomey wrote, so there, there are two distinct priorities. So the Rule 20A, because we have funding from PG&E, which we- So the Rule 20A, because we have funding from PG&E, which we're, we could lose if we don't establish a district and do some things. This is citywide, not using Rule 20A funding, using some other funding source, like the lottery. So, yeah, I got to, if, if that's good, we'll keep it on the list and-
I need to get the public in, put on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Does the public want to speak to this item?
Hello? I'd like to bring you up to speed on the last line there. Carmel Cares working with residents. I'm happy to say that we turned in our preliminary design, which was developed by Wallace Group, same engineering company the city's been working with. The city's been very much involved with this project. I'm keeping everybody up to speed, and the city's been very great to work with on this project. So we turned in our preliminary design to PG&E a couple days ago. I personally think that they're going to move very quickly. They love the business model we've developed, which, which I won't go into detail, but it's pretty exciting and they've never seen before. They are hopefully going to turn around their design in three months or quicker, and once we have that, we are going to be doing the joint trench design with utilities and PG&E in the meantime, and we will hire a contractor and we'll do the project. So this really could happen within a year. Brandon's smiling at me, but they, in the meantime, they've been turning other opportunities from here all the way down to Yankee Point over to Carmel Cares and this business model, which is interesting, because they see this as a way forward to free them up from doing all the upfront situations where only 20% of them ever happen. So that's part of the problem, I think they're wasting their time, so it takes six months for a phone call, but we answer the phone right away. So one of the projects is up on Lincoln between First and Second, another one on, on Scenic between Ocean and Eighth, another one on Martin or on Bayview, to the west side of Martin Way, and another one from Point Lobos all the way to Yankee Point on Highway One. All of these projects have people with a fair amount of resources to do so, and they can do that with tax-free or tax-deferred money, and which lowers the price about 40% for those people. Anyway, that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, bring it back. Yeah, we still have, we have direction? We're good.
The next, the next item, which we added in October, is, is extremely time-sensitive. Andy Carr talked about, you know, having a, you know, making sure everyone's well-informed, and clearly, and we should have started the conversation with, we want to make sure the community, whether it's residents, commercial property owners, business owners, what have you, feel like we're doing something for them rather than to them. So the reason I tell you this is time-sensitive is because if we're to proceed with a ballot measure for an even-year election, which is this year, to add a trans-documency tax increase in November, we need to begin socialize that now. I wish we had done it a little bit sooner. We have to get the ballot language in by August.
I mean, technically, July.
Or July, August, there it is, July. So again, we don't want the hospitality community to feel like they didn't hear about this and just add a TOT increase. So if you're going to keep it on, because it could be a significant revenue source, we did math in public yesterday, Nova did math, and we're looking at a TO, a 2% TOT increase, it brings an additional-
1.4 million.
1.4 million dollars per year, could be used any way you want, obviously, it's a policy decision. Just for information, most other communities in our area, their, their trans-documency tax is 12%, with the exception of the county. We are at 10%, but we do have 2% self-assessed by hospitality for Visit Carmel. So the de facto rate is, is 12%. So again, if we're going to get going on this one, we probably need to begin to socialize it within the, you know, by May or at the May meeting.
Could I sort of ask a question, kind of, it's kind of a question comment. If I understand correctly, if it's going to be for the general fund, there's a lower percentage that the public has to vote to approve it, and then if it's going to be given to a specific fund, it has to be a higher, I believe, 2/3? Do we know, are we talking about general right now, or are we talking about a specific use?
That's, that's a question for you, but, so Proposition 218 says that if you're going to raise, if you're going to tax, if it's for, it's kind of, it's actually backwards. It's ridiculous. So if you're going to use it for general purposes, the passage rate is 50% plus 1. So that means you could pay me more, or you could buy a police car, or whatever. If it's for a specific purpose, like, I don't know, like a new police department remodel, then it has to pass by 66 and, 66 and 2/3, so 66%. So it's a higher threshold for a specific purpose.
So we would need to decide that and declare that before we can put this on the ballot?
Yes.
As a council.
Yes. Yes. I mean, again, just because you have a general tax doesn't mean you can't spend it any way you want. That's a policy issue, but if you're going to, you know, do, so, so the existing sales tax, Measure C, which is, which we adopted a few years ago now, that's a general tax, so we can use it for any purpose we want.
Is there anybody in the public who should speak to this item? No, I don't see anybody. All righty, get back to council. I don't have a problem having a discussion about this. Any else?
Dave, I couldn't understand.
I said I don't have a problem having a discussion about this.
No, I'd like to have a discussion about it, because I'm scared to death about our budget and our CIP and all the things that we need to get done, and I think it's, it's something we need to explore quickly. What, you said if, if it's an uneven year, can it be an off year? No? It has to be-
General election.
A general election, which would be every two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion by council members?
May sounds good to me.
Ken.
Okay. Thank you, council.
So we'll see, just to be clear, we'll see it in May. Like, we'll follow sort of the same process we followed back in 20, 2019 or-
2020, 2020, even year, 2020.
But that would have been COVID, the COVID year. We had did it before-
No, Measure C was in 2020.
The what?
Measure C was in 2020, so special, yes.
I think that one started to be discussed in 2019, so it was discussed for longer before it was put on the ballot.
It was on the ballot in 2020, though, yeah, in the spring of 2020.
Oh, during the, this primary season, right?
Mrs. Carr has a question, if you'd like-
Sorry, question?
Yeah, I don't, when was the last time, was it 2020 that the taxes raised?
Yes, ma'am, so-
What was it raised from? What wasn't, what was it raised to?
Wasn't a tax raise, it was C. It was a, it was a new tax.
Yeah, so our sales tax went from, our special sales tax, which is a city, we keep all of it, went from 1 and 1/2-
No, I'm referring to the TOT tax of hotels, but when-
It's never been raised.
I thought you wanted to raise it 12%.
I, I don't have an opinion at this point in time, but, but it's been 10% for decades.
Okay, yeah, because when I owned hotels, it was a 10%. It's kind of ridiculous.
Okay, so Mrs. Carr's saying when she owned hotels, it was 10%. So we have one vote right there. So, yeah, moving, moving along, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yep, let's move on.
The Bridge to Everywhere, this is a COD project, I know Mayor White's here. We're, you know, we're, we're real strong advocates of this project. We wrote a letter to the Coastal Conservancy, Congressman Farr, you know, Greg, Mayor White, you know, the whole, Doug Schmitz, the whole party, Barbara Bukema, who's the, the executive director for COD, we're very supportive. Mayor's on a subcommittee. We recently assigned Catherine Wallace, who's a brilliant young planner that we have from the planning office. So this is, we're kind of in a support role. I don't, again, based on the hour, I don't know if you need to discuss it a lot. It needs to remain, it's a great project. What it would basically do is look at a landing zone using Rio Park, which is a property that we've owned since 1986, as the, the end of a bridge, a pedestrian bridge, that would link up a series of trails, not just Mission Trail Nature Preserve, but you could traverse all the way out along the river to Rancho Quinata and maybe Garland. So it's a great project, we should remain a support role. It's, doesn't have a, it was a priority items, but we'll, we'll continue to work on this. Again, we're in a support role.
Anybody wishing to speak to this?
I tried.
And this is a, a project that had its roots about 50 years ago, when I started building Mission Trail Nature Preserve, and thought it'd be wonderful to have that as a link to the greater community. And then I happened to get appointed to the COD, the sanitary district, and the day I first started the meeting, my first meeting, they were thinking about eliminating the catwalk bridge across Carmel River, and they were just about to make the point, and I wasn't, I was there to listen but not be involved, because I hadn't seen the, the agenda, but when it came up, I said, well, wait a minute, don't get rid of the bridge, you'll never get it back, and it could be an asset for a link to the south side of the Carmel River from Mission Trail Nature Preserve, and to this day, I've been pushing that as long as I could possibly do, and I've gotten winded doing it. But we're pretty close to working a deal out, and we're sort of thinking that it's going to be a description of Hatton to the Pacific Greenway, and that would include Mission Trail, Rio Park, the bridge that COD owns, and they're fully in support of it, as well as hopefully the city, so, and the community at large, because it'll be a great connection for everybody to be able to walk on foot across the Carmel River and link into all the regional parks, as well as Point Lobos. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anybody else?
Oh, like they say, when you get old, you got to keep busy. COD is the organizing group that's taking this project on, and basically, it's a hiking trail, not a walking trail, but it could be used for both. The hiking trail would start at the base of Ocean Avenue, go along the beach, on your pathway, our pathway, around the point, down along, by the Eastwoods, what the devil would call that place?
Mission Ranch.
Yeah, Mission Ranch. Mission Ranch, and then we have a right-of-way, COD does, across the old stables of this flatland where it used, was going to be a park, but the city's using that for their purposes. The bridge that Greg's talking about is a 70-year-old suspension bridge, very much like the Golden Gate. Looks a little different than the Golden Gate, but it's just the same, big cables. Well, the base piers are cracking, cement's cracking, it's starting to go, go. It's the only way across the river if the bridge goes out again, which we hope it doesn't. But the trail would go across the bridge, down and under Highway One, which you see they're starting to talk about a causeway, under the road there, close to the existing Highway One bridge. Or if you want to start across behind the youth baseball field, the south side, we have a right-of-way across to Mission, across Mission Fields area, and going up the park. And so you've got a great selection of distances to walk. You go up the park, cut to the ocean side to the left at the end of it, and you have to walk down through our business district to get your car, which probably parks at the foot of Ocean. So that's a positive, too. They're going to be tired, they want to stop and have, you know, something to eat or look, okay? So that's what we're, we're pushing on, and we're looking for cooperation, and so far it's been very helpful from the city to put this package together. We're footing the initial amount of money out of our budget, because it's important to us. If there's ever a flood and we have a problem with the bridge, the highway bridge, the one that's there now is the only way we can get to the Suez Treatment Plant, and so it helps us, too, and I swear we're fully behind it. Coastal Conservancy, Greg mentioned, is very positive about it, except apparently the state budget is not positive as it should be, but we're fairly high up in their, their choice. And don't ever forget our fight song, "When you flush, think of us."
I'm going to just be quick. I didn't have a chance to set up technology-wise, but I am helping Ken and Greg and Sam Farr and Barbara Bukema and others work on the Bridge to Everywhere project. We're almost ready to launch our new website, and so I'll make sure that everyone gets a chance to see it, but we want this to be something that the public loves and can see and understand, because it's all of our most spectacular beauty places. We want to create the most incredible walking and hiking trail in the state of California, and so I just wanted to let you know that very soon you'll be able to see what we're putting together.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else wishing to speak? You know, I want to bring it back. I think this is a great project, I'd make it a high priority, I really do. I think it's got a great potential for connecting all the way, all the systems and all the, all the resources we've got from Nature Preserve, Mission Trail, all the way out to Point Lobos. Amazing project.
I would leave it. Agreed, Mayor, leave it as high.
Yeah, I think the wonderful thing about it is, in all these years where we have not been able to actually create the Rio Park we all want, this would actually almost do this with, well, it would do it without any purchase of land, it would do it with full cooperation from state parks, Coastal Conservancy, Regional Park District, the COD. It's, it's just a wonderful project that would make a special place. Joyce Stevens used to say that Carmel was lucky that it was surrounded by an emerald necklace. Joyce Stevens is in her 90s, and she did a lot of preservation work. That would be Hatton Canyon, Mission Trail, the river, the beach, and Pescadero. And this would allow people to have the enjoyment of that riparian area when, when the scenic pathway, or, excuse me, the beach was not available. It just provides some wonderful opportunities, so I think we should definitely keep it on a high priority.
I just wanted to thank everyone who's been working on it, and the effort and the passion you put in, and it just really shows what amazing people we have in this community, and when they come together and the thoughts and the creativity that they have, so thank you all.
Okay, we have direction?
This one's kind of a third rail. I mean, we, we do have the north lot, oh, so just, just to confirm, so when we drafted the lease with Sunset Cultural Center, Inc., the nonprofit that manages this property for us, we specifically excluded the north lot from the lease, so just wanted to really kind of make that clear, and that, you know, we drafted that in 2017, Christine Sandin on Sunset's side, me on our side with a couple of council members. So, you know, there was some ideas here, that we also got an unsolicited proposal from a major developer, which was, again, not solicited by us. This property is identified as an opportunity site in the draft housing element, provides us, there's no obligation to do anything on it, with the exception of sending out an RFP with all kinds of conditions that, that we would socialize, obviously, with council and with stakeholders. But, yeah, this one is, this one's pretty tricky, so it is a low priority. I certainly wouldn't recommend that you elevate it anything, to anything higher than it currently is.
All right, is anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item?
Hi, Tim Toomey again. I recommend that you delete this. As Chip pointed out, it's already included in the Housing Element project, and to keep these, keep this, as well as the opportunities in the Housing Element project, on a priority list, it's just too confusing, so that would be my recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anybody else? We hand her the mic.
Just a quick question, Mary Gifford. You're going to build underground parking when you, if and when you do this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you, in the meantime, while you're constructing, which is probably a two-year project, where are all these cars going to park? Where?
So Mrs. Gifford's asking-
Where will all the cars park that are right out there in the north lot, if, let's say the project takes two years? Neighborhood. Well, drive by this neighborhood in the next week, and you'll see with all the construction that's going on, there are no parking places.
Yeah, so to Mrs. Gifford's question, again, there's, there's no project planned at this point in time, so, but what, what the council is requiring for large-scale projects is what's called a construction truck parking management plan. So again, that's for private development, we would certainly do it for ourselves, but again, that's a long way down the road. And I just, you know, Mayor McLeod is here, so Mayor McLeod and I met with Clint Eastwood 25 years ago, and what was that guy's name? Steve Diamond, who was, wanted to build an art gallery, public art gallery, there was a- who was, he wanted to build an art gallery, public art gallery. There was a proposed expansion of, well, we wanted to rebuild the library there.
John Thodos was the architect.
Part, Thodos was the architect, yeah. So there are a lot of ideas, and I think that, that, that's been percolating. But again, nothing's happened.
But there's no water.
There's no water, there's no parking, no trees.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my second question. So you answered it. No water? How do you move people in with no water?
Yeah, well...
You'll come to, so it's still on the back, back burner?
Well, that's why we're recommending. It's already on the back burner, so the council's going to debate whether to take it off the burner altogether.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody in the council? Council members?
I, I would agree with Tim. I, I think it is confusing, and I think we, I think we can delete it off our list.
Okay, thank you, council.
All right, next item.
Uh, Housing Element Implementation, again, it's, it was added as a priority item because it's, it's a necessity out of the, the Housing Element. There's no real action that we can, can take now, because the element hasn't been adopted. So, I'd just leave it on, and it'll, it'll percolate along.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you say it's more than 5 percent, though?
The implementation.
Yes, I think, I think the thing, yeah, the thing to draw between is the other item is the adoption of the Housing Element. And once the Housing Element is adopted, then we start the implementation. So the only part of the implementation that's done is really the creation of the implementation schedule. So we know it's what we were going to try to do over the next eight years. So until we start that eight years, it really hasn't started. Only the creation of the schedule has happened yet.
Thank you.
I would focus on kind of the heading if it is what it is. But is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item?
Really quickly, I think the Housing Element has got a lot of projects and programs in it as a part of that timeline rollout. And I question whether or not we've got adequate staff to take that on. So we'd like to make sure we can be successful at whatever we choose to implement. But there are directions and commitments in that, that is going to need potentially more resource, because I know those resources just grow on trees around here. But just wanted to mention, thank you.
Thank you.
Just an asterisk.
Anybody else?
Councilman Draymond, if I don't...
If there's no one else from the public, just an asterisk to what Nancy said, is especially with the low-income housing, you're going to have to have some staff member, somebody keeping track of the people's income, whether they are staying at that income level and that sort of thing. So that will take staff time.
Well, actually, that's, that's something to be debated, because if, if and when we would engage with developing, say, the north lot, we would probably, if we were wise, engage with an experienced, affordable housing developer who would do the management of that, because that is a very big job. And there are people that know how to do it and could have that, just like the foundation manages the income limits, and who gets to live at the foundation, and so on and so forth. There are people that are professionals at that, and affordable housing developers usually have that expertise. I did want to mention that Housing Element Implementation, one of the very first things will be the development of the objective design guidelines, which we have money for. It was mentioned earlier that we've spent all this money on the study, but that money came from the state, the money to do the project, or the, the plan with HCD. That money came from the state in the form of a LEAP grant to do that. And there is money from the state, it did get cut a little bit, but there is money from the state to do the next phase, which I believe we're going to use for development of the objective design guidelines. So, yes, it did take our staff time, but there were several hundred thousand dollars in that grant. Brandon could speak to that. But it seems this is a logical place to, the thing that we just took off, maybe be part of this. Because once we have that approved plan, the certified plan, which we hope we will have very, very shortly, then we can actually start more outreach to see the property owners in the downtown area, for example, what their interest is, what we could offer them as far as the little tiny bit of water we have. We have to remember that sometime in this eight-year period, we hope there will be a water solution. So, yeah, there's a lot to now the next phases, once we have our certification.
All right. So where are we going with this? What do you want to do?
Well, I think it has to stay as a priority, because if we don't do some of that implementation and outreach, and we get a, sort of a report card halfway through our cycle, they're going to wonder why we haven't done some of the implementation, as I understand it. Is that correct, Brandon?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully by September, we will have an adopted Housing Element. We can discuss its priority ranking again then. But for now, it just stays in this, kind of this purgatory limbo, as a low priority.
We agree.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Final item.
Final item, we had a, we have an ad hoc committee on outdoor wine tasting. This is on private property, not in the public right-of-way, not on our sidewalks, certainly not in our parks or natural areas. The ad hoc committee is made up of Mayor Potter and, Councilmember Richards, I'm, I'm sorry, Barron. I was looking at him, but I, I don't know what happened. But Brandon and I attended a meeting, it was really a well-attended meeting, members of the public, members of the, the wine industry, if you will, wine tasting rooms and the like. And I think the, the ad hoc committee really communicated what they felt would be comfortable with. And we got testimonials from every, you know, wine, every wine person, and kind of got kicked back into, Brandon and I, to do homework, which we haven't done. So it was to look at other communities and how they deal with outdoor wine tasting on private property. You know, we've always been a pretty, a little bit of a staid community. We have a, we have, I think necessarily so, a conservative relationship with alcohol. I, I know I preached that, so I know that, and I maybe oversaid it, so everybody knows what my thoughts are. But I think this meeting really opened up my mind, because we got, we got testimony from the wine, the winemakers, if you will, and they really understood that, and they really wanted to treat our community in a respectful manner as well. So, anyway, homework assignments back in our court. We just haven't done it yet. It's a low priority, it should stay there. We'll continue to work on it. Talk to you in September.
Comment on this item?
Joe's coming up. Joe, you want to talk about wine?
No.
Okay.
You finished about the wine.
I'm finished about the wine. I finished the wine.
I don't have a problem with a recommendation.
Oh, you want to, you want to make a comment? Let me grab you the microphone here. This one's hardest. You can sit my chair down.
I have a comment, not about this, though.
Oh.
Let us finish up.
We're just coming.
Yes, that's what I'm wa, was waiting for.
Yeah, we'll finish up this one with a closing comment for the council community. Okay, so we, I have a problem believing this word is.
Yeah, I just have one question. Is this just the outdoor on the patio thing, or is this this whole new designation of wine tasting that Jack Galant has talked about?
Yeah, the licensing is outside our control.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's outside our control. This is just the outdoor wine tasting. Now, again, the, we, we don't actually allow wine tasting. We have, the, the selling of wine in our village is a retail use, with an ancillary, a very small ancillary, you know, Mrs. Toomey and I are going, I'm sorry, Mr. Toomey and I are having chicken for dinner. We want to taste a couple of wines before we purchase one to take home to drink with dinner. They're not where you're going in and drinking wine. That's not the purpose. And so, to answer your question...
I'm talking to the wine.
The answer, it's, so it's just the first question, council member, about, about wine tasting outdoors. And I know your concerns, ma'am, and the other council members do as well. So Brandon and I have already talked about a litany of, of conditions of approval. If we would allow this, that would, would ensure that, again, the character of the village is protected. Did that answer your question?
Yes and no.
All right, we have direction.
It's separate from changing...
Designations, yes.
How we work on it remaining tasty, not wine bar.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, we have direction. Okay. So now we're going to close up the meeting. Joe, you had a closing comment?
I have a question. I hear the words ad hoc a lot, and I'm just hoping that with these ad hoc committees, that they're using the public community as well with the ad hoc, and it's not just two people who are the ad hoc and no one else. That's my comment.
Well, Brandon, Brandon, what is the Latin definition of ad hoc?
I suggest, I would say, the dog.
I know. Yeah, because he was Bravo. I couldn't see Councilman Draymond anymore. The dog has taken over. So, under the Brown Act, under the Brown Act, the Brown Act allows ad hoc committees, which are for a specific purpose, obviously can't be majority of council or a board, to meet. What our ad, ad hocs sometimes do, Joe, Todd, are they meet to help define the assignment prior to inviting in the public and having public meetings. So every ad hoc is different. I know that there are some people that would like to have every ad hoc meeting be a community, you know, community meeting. But, but again, some of the ad hocs like to meet, to help, I think Councilmember Richard, you, you've helped me define that, is to understand what, what, what we're working on prior to addressing the, the greater community.
Well, I, I think that some, some of the items have, are more detail-oriented in the beginning. And so you have to have some fact-finding before you present it to the general public, because you have to have some answers to the questions that are going to be asked at that first meeting. Otherwise, you're just writing questions down and then going and finding the answers.
Yeah, the contrast would be, you know, when, when you and Councilmember Felito were on the housing ad hoc, we knew what the homework assignment was, right? And the state said, thou shalt develop a revised Housing Element. So, that was, that was pretty well-known. Some of the, some of the topics that the ad hocs deal with, it's less well-defined.
Well, the ambulance one was perfect, because the ambulance one, we brought in five members of the community that had really no partiality to whether we keep the ambulance or farm the ambulance out. And so it was, it was a little bit, it was just different. I think they're all a little bit different.
All right. Well, we're going to wrap up now. I want to thank the public for their patience today, their participation, and their professionalism. It's been a great meeting. Sorry, we'll have to go back to the normal rigid way I run a meeting before, but this is a great forum where you can actually participate in an open dialogue. It's been great. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.